We good? We ready?
Hello, everyone. Welcome to today's Highbury New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Higher Education, jointly with the Committee of Veterans. Please all electronic devices to vibrate or silent mode at this moment. If you wish to submit testimony, you may send it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Cheers. We're ready to begin.
Good morning. I'm Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, Chair of the Committee on Higher Education. Welcome to our joint hearing with the Committee on Veterans chaired by Councilmember Bob Holden, Robert Holden. Very formal. We're very formal here. It's Robert Holden. Today's oversight hearing is on Support Services for Student Veterans at the City University of New York. And before I get to my opening statement, I do want to thank all of our veterans who are in the audience today and on the panels, as well as their family members for what they give to our city and our country. We look forward in this hearing to learning more about the efforts of the city's Department of Veterans Services and CUNY, together and separately, in recruiting, enrolling, supporting, retaining, and graduating student veterans, reservists, active service members, and their families. We want to make sure that CUNY's programs are serving all veteran and active service member students equitably, including service members of color and service members with disabilities. We are interested in learning about best practices in delivering services to this important population and in understanding any gaps in education programs or support services needed to serve this population more effectively. On a personal note, I am looking forward to this hearing with Councilmember Holden, who has given many years to our city and to CUNY as a professor. And as former Chair of the Veterans Committee, I have developed a deep admiration for the veteran community and veteran families. So I'm very much looking forward to this hearing. One of my staff members read in a news article recently that CUNY's Queens College just finished hosting On the Spot Admissions Day for veterans and active service members in order to streamline the admissions process for the current spring semester. I applaud that initiative in theory and would like to know how it worked in practice. The news article noted that Queens College has a rich tradition of student veterans, including the fact that 70% of the pioneer class of 1941 served in the U.S. Armed Forces during World War II. A memorial to those student veterans on the campus quad reminds current students every day of the legacy of those veterans. Let me thank Queens College President Frank Wu for the following statement. "The veterans and military personnel taking courses here bring an unrivaled level of academic excellence to our institution. Their dedication to and sacrifice for our great country are inspirational and sustain our ideals. We take pride in the college's consistently being designated as a military-friendly school and as a military-friendly spouse school and are committed to providing support to this community through specialized services such as our Veterans Support Services Office." We look forward to hearing more about services like those at our hearing. And I want to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilmember Palladino. I'd also like to thank Adam Starapoli, my Legislative Director, Jenna Klaus, my Chief of Staff, Christina Yalamati, the Committee's Counsel, Regina Paul, the Committee's Policy Analyst, and Nia Hyatt, the Committee's Senior Finance Analyst. And now I'd like to turn it over to Chair Holden to give his opening statement.
Thank you, Chair. And good morning, everyone. I am Councilmember Robert Holden, Chair of the New York City Council's Committee on Veterans. And today, the Committee on Veterans joins the Committee on Higher Education to conduct an oversight hearing on support for student veterans and the City University of New York, at the City University of New York. The committee will examine how the Department of Veteran Services and CUNY can work together and individually in recruiting, enrolling, supporting, retaining, and graduating student veterans. Our members are interested in learning about the best practices in service delivery for veterans and in uncovering any gaps in education programming and support services for veterans and their families. And as a former CUNY professor myself, and student, by the way, started in 1969, so that's, you can figure that one out. And I taught 44 years as a CUNY professor. So CUNY's in my blood, so it's literally. And I'm looking forward to this discussion that we're having today. It was always self-evident to me that our veteran students had different needs than the average student, and that was from experience. And besides having the life experience of serving in the military, veterans were typically older than my average student and were dealing with more serious matters outside the classroom. And it dates back to, I have many Vietnam vets in my classes, starting in the, obviously in the 70s. About half of post-9/11 veterans say it was difficult for them to readjust to civilian life after their military service. Veterans who served in combat are also more likely to say that their readjustment was very difficult. So an overwhelmingly majority of surveyed U.S. service members believe that higher education is a critical component of a successful transition from military to civilian life and a vehicle for upward mobility. So nearly three-quarters of surveyed service members indicated that advancing education is one of their primary motivations to serve, and with over half listing educational benefits as their top motivating factor. However, the transition to higher ed for military service can be challenging for student veterans and can be ripe with obstacles to successful completion of the required degree coursework. And many times, they couldn't get, my students couldn't get, the courses they needed to finish in a timely manner, and it did cut off some of their benefits. Veterans must learn to integrate themselves into socio-cultural context of the campus and its student body and learn to relate to and interact with others in a new, less structured environment. And so, all of this, in addition to student veterans, especially those who served in combat, many have to deal with military service-related trauma, often in isolation. These challenges can lead to and manifest themselves as mental health difficulties such as depression, anxiety, the inability to focus, as well as behavioral health disorders such as alcohol and substance abuse. So given the demonstrated value of higher education for veterans and their needs, it is imperative to ensure that student veterans are supported with carefully designed, thoughtful, and cultural competence services while studying at CUNY. So it's critically, it's especially critical after the COVID-19 pandemic, which actually made it a lot worse for the veterans in higher education, while at the same time, there were some very huge barriers to actually getting the resources and services. So I want to thank the administration, CUNY's administrators, advocates, service providers, volunteers, and any current and former student veterans who have taken the time to join us today. So at this time, I'd like to turn it back to Chair Dinowitz.
Thank you, Chair Holden. And I can't believe I did this. I forgot to mention that I too am a CUNY graduate. I got my master's, and my father was a CUNY graduate as well. I'd also like to recognize that we've been joined by Councilmembers Barron and Nurse. Thank you, Chair Holden. I'd like to remind everyone who wishes to testify in person today that you must fill out a witness slip. It looks like this. It's located at the desk of the Sergeant-at-Arms near the entrance of the room. Please fill this slip out, even if you have already registered in advance that you will be testifying in person today. To allow as many people to testify as possible, testimony will be limited to three minutes per person, whether you are testifying in person or on Zoom. I'm also going to ask my colleagues to limit their questions and comments to five minutes. Please note that witnesses who are here in person will testify before those who are signed into the Zoom webinar. And now, in accordance with, I'd like to read off the names of the first panel. It'll be Commissioner Hendon, of course, thank you for your service, Ellen Greeley, Nicole Orlando, Denise Maybank, and Ricardo Garcia. In accordance with the rules of the council, I will administer the affirmation to the witnesses from the City University of New York and the Department of Veterans Services. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmembers' questions? I heard the chorus of "I do," so that's good. Thank you. As a reminder to all of our witnesses, please state your name prior to your testimony for the record.
My name is James Hendon, Commissioner, New York City Department of Veteran Services, and just beginning my testimony now. Good morning, Chair Holden, Chair Dinowitz, committee members, council staff, veterans, and advocates. My name is James Hendon, and I am Commissioner for the New York City Department of Veteran Services. I'm joined today by Ellen Greeley, Assistant Commissioner of Policy and Strategic Partnerships, and Nicole Orlando, Policy Analyst. I'd also like to acknowledge my colleagues from the City University of New York who are here in attendance. I'm honored to have the opportunity to speak with you about student veterans, their unique challenges, and the services and programs our agency offers to connect them with the resources and services they require to achieve academic success. Since 1944, the Servicemen's Readjustment Act, commonly known as the GI Bill, has provided educational opportunities to generations of service members, veterans, reservists, and their dependents. The post-9/11 GI Bill marks a major expansion of veterans' education benefits, which in turn has driven a rise in military-connected student enrollment across the country. According to the Veteran Benefits Administration, there were more than 836,000 student veterans and beneficiaries receiving education benefits in fiscal year 2021. Of that total, an estimated 23,884 student veterans and beneficiaries used VA education benefits at colleges and universities in New York State. Recent academic studies indicate that student veterans enhance campus diversity, enrich the intellectual discourse, perform well academically, arrive on campus with ample financial support, and remain engaged members of the community after graduation. While student veterans are an asset to institutions of higher education, they must overcome significant structural barriers to enroll in and complete college. It is important to mention that these structural barriers and challenges are only magnified during the COVID-19 pandemic. According to available data, student veterans are more likely than civilian students to be Black, Indigenous, and people of color, the first in their families to go to college and have families of their own. These adult learners are unique in that they come to higher education with challenges and strengths that differ from traditional college students. Putting into place best-practice approaches to promote veteran student success is crucial for transitioning those who have served our country into post-military careers. Our agency is committed to ensuring student veterans, particularly those enrolled at CUNY institutions, receive the resources and supportive services they need to succeed. Outreach efforts are an important part of our commitment to encourage veterans' participation in higher education. Our agency works closely with local colleges and universities, both public and private institutions, through our Veterans on Campus Initiative. Veterans on Campus is a collaboration between the New York City Department of Veteran Services, our corporate partners, and New York City-based colleges and universities. The goals of Veterans on Campus include assisting academic institutions in identifying and adopting best practices that can create a supportive student-veteran experience, inspiring new transitioning service members and their families to pursue their higher education goals here in New York City, catalyzing and promoting academic research that will lead to deeper understanding and innovation, and ensuring successful transition to purpose-driven lives through educational achievement and viable careers. We also refer student veterans to CUNY's Project for Return and Opportunity in Veterans Education, otherwise known as CUNY PROVE. PROVE offers student veterans community and transitional support through mentors and social work interns at select CUNY institutions, as well as private colleges, universities. We make available our website, educational information, and resources for student veterans, and partner with local colleges and universities to host on-campus events for student vets. All student veterans can also take advantage of our VetConnect NYC multi-service referral platform, along with VetConnect Pro and Empire Vets, employment search engines which include a military translation tool that converts military service into civilian real-time job openings in both the public and private sectors. Our latest initiative is the Virtual NYC Transition Assistance Program, or NYC TAP, scheduled for Thursday, February 16, 2023. NYC TAP will include a presentation by Columbia University's Center for Veteran Transition and Integration on tips for returning to the classroom after leaving military service. As the student-veteran population continues to grow, it is essential for higher education administrators and faculty to understand how the characteristics and background of student veterans shape their college experiences. To accomplish this goal, local institutions of higher education must continue to invest in academic and social support services for student veterans that facilitate sustainable strategies to address the unique issues of returning service members and veterans. Local colleges and universities must be vigilant in supporting transitioning student veterans through recruitment, enrollment, retention, and graduation, while also building military-cultural competency into the institution. In conclusion, our agency is committed to engaging student veterans and connecting them with the resources, benefits, and supportive services they need. We thank you for the opportunity to testify on this important topic and look forward to answering your questions. Mr. Chair, and Mr. Chair, separate from my remarks, given the timing of this hearing, I just want to use this forum to make two quick announcements to the veteran community members who may be here in person or watching online. Number one, for all who are interested in applying to join the local community boards, the community board application deadlines are in the coming weeks. More information can be found at nyc.gov/vetcommunityboards. It's nyc.gov/vetcommunityboards. Number two, for nonprofits looking to apply for city council discretionary funding, the application deadline is Tuesday, February 21st. Please visit nyc.gov/vetcouncilfunding to learn more. It's nyc.gov/vetcouncilfunding. Thank you.
Good morning. I don't want to blow you out. Chairperson Dinowitz, Chairperson Holden, it's nice to meet you, and I'm so glad you're a CUNY alum. And to all of the members of the Committee on Higher Education, and I should have said my name first, I saw the look. Okay, Denise Maybank, City University of New York. I'm coming back to that. But to the members of the Committee on Higher Education and the Committee on Veterans, thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony before you regarding services for student veterans at the City University of New York. My name is Denise Maybank, and I have the privilege of serving as the Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs. The committee's interest in and their focus on the services and care of CUNY students is laudable, and I value all that you do and all that you pay attention to in that regard. When we think about what is to happen, I heard Chairperson Dinowitz indicate that it is either together or separately that I serve with my partner in a commitment to wonder for student veterans. I am so honored to work with Commissioner Hendon, and I don't want to go past that and make it a light comment, because it is with his energy and with his focus that we are able to accomplish so much. I'm accompanied today by those on the front lines of serving student veterans, those best positioned to offer the narrative and insights responsive to your interests and questions. And joining me in testimony today is retired U.S. Army veteran Ricardo Garcia, who serves as the Veteran Coordinator at Hostos Community College. The most critical voices of our panel are those of two currently enrolled student veterans, Mervyn Vincent, a student at Brooklyn College, and Shakima Wiley from Hunter College. Additionally, I am accompanied by the leaders from our staff best in the know regarding our veteran, I'm sorry, our veterans-related programs. Leora Shidowsky, Project PROVE Director, and Jessica Agatha Funis, who is from the CUNY Office of Veterans Affairs. These experts are here as key resource support in answering your questions today. You will hear from them regarding specific programs and services made available to our students and the impact of some of those supports on the ultimate success of students with disabilities and who are also veterans. As the largest urban university in the nation, the City University of New York is described as a transformative engine of social mobility that is a critical component of the lifeblood of New York City. An integral part of the university's mission is the provision of services necessary to support the accomplishment of the academic goals of each student. CUNY students deserve optimal circumstances in which to attain their goals, and we support them in having meaningful and fulfilling experiences. We are committed to our students not merely surviving, but to them thriving through the CUNY experience. Who are our student veterans? What do they, what do we know about their needs and the things from which they benefit? Included in my written testimony is five years of student veteran enrollment data, offering the numbers and percent for each of the years by ethnicity. Data for Fall 2022 will not become available until later in the spring semester, probably the latter part of March, and so that is why it is not included. Generally, the student-veteran population has been 1% of the total university enrollment, ranging from a high of 1.24% in 2018 to 0.98% in 2021, the impacts of COVID. The population is predominantly male, and with the gender distribution showing an increase in female veterans from 22.9% in 2017 to 26.4% in 2021. The overwhelming majority of veterans enrolled are in degree programs, and the percent of veterans enrolled as graduate students has increased from 10% in 2017 to 13.5% in 2021. Among the total enrollment for Fall 2021, 3.5% of students were identified as students with disabilities. By comparison, a closer look at the student-veteran population reveals a higher representation of students with disabilities at 5.1%. There are many ways in which the university serves offices, I'm sorry, in which the Veterans' Services Offices and the Disability Services Offices come together to assure the coordination of services for student veterans with disabilities, so as to make necessary services evident while normalizing the engagement of student veterans on the campus, so as not to stigmatize. Under the Division of Student Affairs, two main units focus on providing services to or connecting student veterans with services across the university. The CUNY Office of Veterans Affairs and the Project for Return and Opportunity in Veteran Education, or Project PROVE. Both of these units have benefited from the generous support of the city council over the years, and for that, we are sincerely grateful. The CUNY Office of Veterans Affairs serves the central coordinating role for the campus-based units, providing services for student veterans. The office is staffed by a full-time director and full-time assistant, supported by student, and is also supported by student employees. COVA, as it's called for short, because we make an acronym of everything at CUNY, serves as the coordinating office for academic and financial needs among all CUNY student veterans. COVA orchestrates initiatives to retain student veterans and their family members by implementing best practices and complying with federal, state, and CUNY policy. COVA also serves as a clearinghouse for information across CUNY campuses, working collaboratively with community agencies. COVA aims to increase awareness and sensitivity to the unique needs of veterans. COVA is responsible for administering the $180,000 allotted by the city council for fiscal year '23. These funds are distributed to campuses to support the peer mentor program. PROVE was founded in 2007 to serve the increasing number of veterans and departments who would be using the GI Bill after serving, I'm sorry, independents, who would be using the GI Bill after serving in the global war on terror. PROVE's innovative field model supports and enhances existing campus veteran services to meet the concrete, social, and emotional needs of student veterans. PROVE trains and deploys graduate social work interns directly to the student-veteran spaces on campuses. PROVE's dual mission is to assist student veterans with their transition to a higher education environment and support their educational journey while training a cohort of graduate social work interns to develop practice knowledge in order to work with military-veteran populations. Social work interns provide direct service to student veterans, identifying unmet needs and assisting in linking student veterans with the appropriate resources, reducing the negative consequences of social disconnection and isolation, and providing social connectivity and a sense of belonging. PROVE regularly serves over 1,000 unique student veterans per academic year. The project was funded by the city council from 2017 through 2021. The vast majority of CUNY campuses have a Student Veterans Resource Center, or Veterans' and Military Affairs or Services Office, that is staffed by full and/or part-time employees. These spaces are meant to serve as a support for student veterans, as well as a physical space for them to build community. Services offered by the Student Veterans Resource Centers include admission support, identifying funding, applying for federal and state benefits, assistance with the VA certification process, help preparing resumes and conducting job searches, and access to other support services as well. Our desire is to not simply meet the standard criteria for classification as a veteran or military-friendly university. We want to surpass those criteria by responding to the needs of a population of students deserving of their significance, being recognized and honored through the programming and support made available. To that end, we are seeking to expand our offerings with a full complement of initiatives from admissions through to completion. In coordination with my partner in commitment and the New York City Department of Veteran Services, we are implementing a deferred admission program under the title Veterans Promise. This offering will allow students graduating from New York City public schools to be admitted to the colleges for which they are eligible and to defer that admission for two years of enlisted service. Upon completion of that service, the student will return and enter the program of study for which they have been receiving, from which they have been receiving ongoing communication through the campus-based offices in CUNY Office of Veterans Affairs while enlisted. The Credit for Heroes option will allow veterans to receive credit for prior learning through a structure offering to assess the equivalency of prior learning to the coursework required for degree programs. This offering will reduce the number of courses to be completed and will accelerate degree completion. Within expansion of CUNY online course offerings, there will be an opportunity for active-duty military to amass credits toward degrees. The reach of the online options expand the possibility for enrollment, course completion, and degree attainment to military across the globe. These initiatives These initiatives will attract a greater number of veterans and their dependents to CUNY, necessitating strengthened services through our campus and central office veterans units. As we would suspect, CUNY could utilize additional resources to more holistically serve our student veterans and address the needs associated with our military enrollment, including spouses and children using benefits. Various academic, fiscal, staffing, and programmatic needs exist, challenging our ability to attract and retain student veterans. Resources to devise high-interest programming for veterans are necessary and interest that we may not be the same as those for, that, sorry, interests that may not be the same for those traditionally-aged students. Career and professional development initiatives designed for those with military experience attracts the attention of industry leaders and provides important opportunities for the population of PROVE. PROVE, which has positive performance indicators, needs a stable source of funding for the assurance that their services and the benefits for the well-being of students are maintained. In conclusion, our engagement with student veterans is not merely about certification and verification for benefits. It is, nor is it intended, to offer a thank you for your service to those who have sacrificed in so many ways to secure our democracy. Our outreach and engagement is about attracting talented and skilled individuals who want to expand their knowledge. Our desire is to have veterans as a part of our diverse, as a part of our diverse environment in order to engage mature individuals and influence the development of their peers in a vibrant community of learners. Our programming and support are about responding to the needs of our student veterans in the interest of their success. And our advocacy on behalf of student veterans is about securing the attention, commitment, and resources necessary to create spaces and environments in which veterans thrive and ultimately become those individuals that make a difference and make the greatest contributions to our society. I want to leave you with a quote from Maya Angelou that says, "We delight in the beauty of the butterfly, but rarely admit the changes it has gone through to achieve that beauty." I believe that our veterans are those butterflies, and we need to acknowledge what they have gone through in order to enjoy what it is they've done and what they bring us as members of our society. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think what you said at the end, the thank you for your services, very important. It has to be more than words, and that's what we're seeking to do in our city. I want to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilwoman Ariola. On Zoom, on Zoom. So this first question is for CUNY. How do you define veteran?
It's a milit, well, it's.
Or how does CUNY define veteran, not you?
Thank you, appreciate that. I'm going to depend on my folks that are doing this on a regular basis, but generally, it is the person who has provided service, and it's not only in active military, but it is also in reserve, reservists as well. But, Leora, go ahead. Oh, Ricardo's, okay, whoever's closest.
There's more testimony?
Yes.
So when I asked my question, I was joking.
But see, we'll be ready when.
All right.
Testify.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Apologies for that, I just wanted to make sure the young lady had a seat. Here we go. Good morning, good morning, good morning, everybody. God bless. Good morning, Chief, Chair Dinowitz, good morning, Chair Holden. It's a pleasure to be among you. Good morning, esteemed council members. I would like to take, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the City Universities of New York's veteran population for Hostos Community College. I'm honored to work at CUNY's most impactful and diverse school, which is recognized as a Hispanic-serving institution throughout the country, Uhenio Maria de Hostos Community College. Before I begin, I'd like the panel to know that I am a retired United States Army Disabled Combat Veteran. I served for 25 years on active duty, the Reserves, and the National Guard. I am also proud to share that I served during our nation's and city's darkest hour, the 9/11 World Trade Center attacks. I also served in Operation Iraqi Freedom and countless other military operations, some of which were in New York City. In addition to my military service, I am also an executive board member with the Bronx County American Legion. As a county vice commander and post commander, I represent and address the concerns and the issues of the veterans within my community and the borough of the Bronx. I currently serve as the Veterans Coordinator for Hostos Community College, assisting transitioning veterans into academia. As a proud CUNY alum graduating from John Jay College and continuing my graduate studies with CUNY's Graduate School of Public Health, I am all too familiar with the needs of our population and the barriers they face during their transition into civilian life. Since its inception, Hostos has worked tirelessly to be a resource and serve the South Bronx ethically diverse, yet underserved and disenfranchised community. Hostos is proud, is the proud recipient of the Mackenzie Scott Grant, which has allowed us to create initiatives that has assisted so many of our students. A few examples of the programs that were created because of the grant are Families United, Bridge Tuition Assistance Fund, Educating for Diversity, and the Workforce Initiative, just to name a few. These programs have been instrumental in helping students with economic hardships, housing, and food insecurity. In addition, Hostos has also, is also a proud recipient of the Perkins Grant. The Perkins Grant has given us the ability to increase both career and technical education programs. We have increased faculty and have purchased new equipment for our students. I'm sure you're asking what this has to do with the military population. Everything. Many of our military members come with an array of barriers that impede their ability to obtain their degrees. From 2003 to 2019, over 4.3 million service members have transitioned out of the military back into civilian life. The United States Census records that from 2017 to 2021, over 24,000 veterans resided in the Bronx. From 2020 to 2023, my office, the Hostos Office of Veterans Affairs, COVA for short, has proudly served over 378 veterans, active members, and dependents. Hostos was recognized by GI Jobs Magazine as a friendly school, as a military-friendly school, and we're very proud of that designation. COVA's mission is to assist veterans in achieving their academic goals by providing them with a strong support system and centralized vet-friendly services. Each veteran's degree ensures a successful transition back into civilian life. Our office provides the academic tools to achieve graduation. Our staff consists of a Veterans Director, a Veterans Coordinator, two VA school-certifying officials, and a Veterans Internship Peer Mentor Program, which the council here had funded, thank you for that. The Coordinator meets individually with each student and evaluates their academic need. Once assessed, the Coordinator works with key departments to create an individualized academic plan that facilitates their academic journey. COVA works closely with the following departments to benefit the students, and a few of the departments involved in this endeavor are listed below, as you can see on your copies there. I'm not going to go through all those departments, quite a few. Additionally, our office has established partnerships with numerous veteran service organizations that enhances the services we provide to our military community. The Hostos Office of Veterans Affairs has created robust services and multifaceted program that aids all our military cohort. Ultimately, my goal is to strengthen the existing office and its programs to better support the needs of our population and expand on the services and resources available to our military students. To do this, we will need your continued support and assistance. Please be mindful that while we grow and increase our veteran pro, our veterans program, we will effectively create a veterans program that will endure for the college's future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, I'd like to note that we've been joined by Councilmember Felice. Would the next witness, please, before you present your testimony, please state your name.
My name is Mervyn Vincent, and I am a United States Marine Corps veteran. I am a student at CUNY Brooklyn College. I am majoring in Finance and Accounting. I am a veteran peer mentor and Student Veteran of America leader. Thank you Chairman Dinowitz, thank you Chairman Holden, for affording me this opportunity to address this New York City Council for Higher Education and Veteran Initiative. I am honored to represent CUNY's student veteran population. Originally, I was born in Haiti, I grew up here in New York City. My love for this country and wanting to serve, serve right after high school, I decided to enlist in the United States Marine Corps. After serving in the Marines for about 10 years, I began the transition into civilian life. Many of the adjustment and barriers, including starting over with a new career path, and also adjusting with life back home. Originally, I was planning with some friends that I've served with to move to Florida, get a place together, and go to college at University of South Florida. However, when I was getting out of the military, that was during the COVID-19 pandemic. I then decided coming back home and being closer to my family and supporting my family was a better choice for me and for my family as well. Since I've always been good with numbers and I have great interpersonal skills, I decided that pursuing a degree in business was a better choice for me. Therefore, I decided to start looking into the universities within City University of New York. And I made the decision that Brooklyn College was the best choice for me. Transitioning from a team environment and a regimented lifestyle into doing things on my own was not an easy transition. Since I haven't participated in a civilian classroom setting for years, my academic journey began with Queensborough Community College. And then once I graduated, I decided to transfer to Brooklyn College to major in Finance and Accounting. The veteran centers at Brooklyn College and Queensborough Community College played a major role within my campus experience. Each center assisted me in navigating the challenges of being a veteran attending college. Since it was my first time being back on the school campus, I received help in the following areas during my veterans orientation. I received help with applying for the Post 9/11 GI Bill, for applying for financial aid and additional scholarships, applying my smart transcript from service towards my degree, receiving more information about the different types of degree within the business field, understanding the degree requirements and how to plan for academic success, how to enroll in classes, create weekly schedules, how to navigate the college spaces, staying engaged, as well as to apply for internship opportunities with the CUNY Office of Veteran Affairs and also professional development. In 2021, I applied for VA work-study at CUNY Office of Veteran Affairs, COVA. It has been quite a life-changing experience for me. During my first year in college, everything was remote. Being intern at COVA has brought so many benefits and motivating factors to my college experience. I was able to interact with fellow veterans who have similar lifestyles. Interning at CUNY Office of Veterans Affairs prepared student veterans with a smoother transition from military mindset to civilian sector. I was able to apply my skill set from service while also acquiring new skill sets. COVA Veteran Peer Mentor Program initiates events related to culture competency, mental health, physical wellness, and counseling. Each Wednesday, we hold Wellness Wednesday, which challenged me to do more within my community and outreach methods to engage others who do not know how to ask or where to receive help. The CUNY Office of Veteran Affairs had built me up to become a veteran peer mentor at my campus at Brooklyn College. The Veteran Peer Mentor is a program sponsored by New York City Council. The initiative trains us to service student veterans through providing a smooth transitioning back to college, a sense of belonging through veteran-on-campus fellowship and support, dependability and reassurance that the veteran peer mentor will serve as a liaison, refer to mental health and physical wellness services. During my time as a veteran peer mentor at Brooklyn College campus, I have been able to reach out to over 300 CUNY student veterans, and also I have helped to restore the Veterans Club at Brooklyn College. So far, 100 of our veterans can have a place to call their own. Because of COVID, the club previously was shut down. Bringing the club back has been beneficial because now I can testify today on this panel that the veteran population needs a space at CUNY to build its community. By doing so, we have a better retention rate. Being a veteran student has many challenges. Transitioning out of military has been a financial hardship. Right before I was getting ready to transition, I realized that I had to downgrade my lifestyle, pay off my debt so that I could be able to attend college and focus on my education. The monthly basic allowance for housing from the Post 9/11 GI Bill has been very helpful. However, securing an apartment has been a nightmare within New York City due to the fact that many landlords do not accept the basic allowance for housing as income. In the beginning of my school year, I had to work several jobs, making it difficult to balance employment in school. However, the veteran peer mentor at Brooklyn College and CUNY Office of Veterans Affairs income had helped me balance school and work while also focusing on my studies. COVA provides an opportunity for veterans to work a living, learn new, be mentored, while being able to focus on a higher education and succeeding. I want to thank you for this time and today to hear our voice. I represent many student veteran voices that need to know that they are supported in their hard work, heroism, and disabilities were not in vain. Martin Luther King said, "We are not makers of history, we are made by history." New York City Council, let's have history made today by leaving a legacy for the next generation of CUNY veterans. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning Chairman Holden, Chairman Dinowitz, and all the City Council Veteran Committee and Higher Education Committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to testify here today. My name is Shakima Wiley, and I'm a Hunter College senior, majoring in Public Health, the mom of an eight-year-old son, and an active Army National Guard member. I'm here today to share a little bit about my experience as a CUNY student veteran. I became a student at Hunter College in 2019. This would be my second attempt at pursuing my bachelor's degree, the difference being 10 years. The first few semesters at Hunter were isolating because I was a part-time student, and most of my classes weren't during the day. So many activities weren't operating at the exact times that I was on campus. My first challenge at Hunter was my interactions with the different academic advisors. It wasn't clear who would assist me and in what ways. Returning to college after so long, coupled with being a transfer student, working full-time, being a parent to a then-four-year-old, and being a soldier in the Army National Guard, I had come to Hunter with a plan to be intentional and urgently needed all the support I could get to see that plan through. When I decided to attend Hunter, I ultimately did so with the idea of becoming a nurse midwife. So that meant pursuing Hunter's nursing program and beginning to fulfill the prerequisites. COVID changed my professional outlook, leading me to declare Public Health as my major. COVID changed my professional outlook, leading me to declare public health as my major. Around the same time, I started to interact more on campus with the Student Veterans Resource Center. Although I knew of the center from the start of my time at Hunter, this was one of the places that I couldn't access. Because of the times I was on campus. Being present in the center gave me a sense of belonging. Whereas being a non-traditional and transfer student had made me feel removed from other students in my classes who were fresh from high school. I started making my way to the resource center every chance I could. Which was helped helpfully staffed with our campus proof team. Meeting other military students and nurturing a network of support I hadn't discovered at Hunter before. Those relationships overflowed into my classes and personal life. Many different challenges would present themselves to me during my time at Hunter. However, I found an invaluable outlet and guidance from the relationship I forged with Lyora Shadovsky. The Director and Educational Coordinator of PROVE. She became a counselor when needed, a resource navigator, and encourager, and so much more. As a second-year public health student set to graduate this spring. I wholeheartedly believe my unorthodox journey to attain my bachelor's degree landed me exactly where I was supposed to be. That being public health. The path it took me to finally realize the best career route. That would allow me to utilize my skills and training from over the years. Make meaningful changes in my community and feel fulfilled was a challenging path. I'm beyond happy that while it wasn't the traditional route, I've reached my first higher educational goal. Which sometimes seemed out of reach. Since being a he- a public health student, I've learned about many topics and issues that are meaningful to me. Because of the neighborhood I come from and the different communities I'm now a part of. I've learned a lot about social determinants of health. This knowledge gave me the answers to so many questions I had growing up in Brownsville and Crown Heights, Brooklyn, New York. Now I'm ready to hit the ground running to be of service again to the places that are dear to my heart. At this juncture, my goals include becoming a full-spectrum doula and lactation counselor. To directly support women who believe these services aren't for them due to lack of understanding and affordability. This insight comes from my focused studies throughout my program. Which has highlighted the realities, causes, and possible solutions for the maternal mortality rate crisis in New York City. Long-term goals include opening a holistic women's health center and historically marginalized communities. Throughout New York City and opening a early child- early childhood education center. To address the gaps in children from undeserved neighborhoods, being unprepared when starting elementary school. Each of these initiatives directly addresses a public health need and promotes the overall betterment of health for those communities. In closing, my time at Hunter has been wholesome and a supreme delight. Thank you for this opportunity.
And thank you all for serving and for your family. I know your daughter must be very proud. Want to make sure there's no one else testifying right now before I make the mistake. Okay, we're good. So I my my first question. What's that? The definition of of veterans, yes. How does CUNY, thanks. How does CUNY uh i- in your application process? For prospective students defining veteran?
Hello?
Hi.
Great. So I I'm gonna clarify on the definition of veteran uh as far as CUNY is concerned. Any person that has served even just one day, uh CUNY identifies them as a veteran. So if you served one day in uniform, um they will consider that service. Um and and I'll recognize you as a service member.
That's that's great. You know, one of uh. Oh, the second part, d- does a prospective applicant uh know that? Yes.
So I I keep turning the mic off. So um Agatha would just.
Hi, Agatha, I think you're gonna need to be.
Hi, my name is Agatha Funes. I'm an Army veteran. Um and on the CUNY's application, when a student veteran is applying for CUNY. It does state on the top of the application that um CUNY considers a veteran um at CUNY or attending to apply CUNY. If you are currently serving or have served in the US Army, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, National Guard, or Reserve. For at least one day, it's on the application.
Okay, that looked a little different than what I. I'm I'm gonna get some emails because I started an application process for undergraduate. Um but that looks a little different than what's on the website. I would just uh add that I don't know if the top of the application you're talking about is paper application.
It's the paper application.
So I I would just recommend just reviewing the website. But the second reason I'm asking is because uh in two thousand twenty one. Uh about the end of twenty one, I think New York City redefined. And made very explicit the definition of the term veteran. I worked with Commissioner Hendon on this. It's actually my bill, so I'm very, I'm like laughing to myself. Um so the term veteran is. Can we do something about the feedback, by the way? Is that possible? It's not. The laptop? All right, we'll deal with it. It's fine. Oh, they fixed it. Whatever it is, they fixed it. So we redefine the term veteran to explicitly include anyone who has served a a a day at all. And to explicitly state regardless of discharge status. Because one of the, and and I think one of the important things is explicitly stating it because. As I understand, there's a a problem uh with with veterans sometimes self-identifying. And part of that might be that fifteen percent of veterans who were discharged other than honorable. Um and my other question is that it includes in New York City. Uh veteran also means a person who serves or has served in the United States Public Health Service. Or as a commissioned member of the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. Is that aligned with your definition of veteran?
No, not at the um present time.
Okay, is that a conversation that's been, I mean, i- it's it sounds like the two of you have frequent meetings, D V S and CUNY. Uh is that a a topic of conversation that has come up?
It's not in my time, but I'm certain that Commissioner Hendon will be sure to have that conversation with me following today.
Right, because as as we talk about student veterans self-identifying. And being sure that they are entitled, that they know themselves they are entitled uh to the services that are provided in the first place. Um I think it's important to make explicit whether or not the people applying can be can self-identify that without any question. Um so so walk me through it a little bit. Someone checks the box. So let's say all those other issues. Are there they identify as a veteran? Or an active service member, whatever it is on the website. They check the box, they do the the dropdown menu, they say they're a veteran. What happens next on from CUNY's side?
And then it prompts.
Microphone, yes, please.
And then it prompts you to um requ- um request if you wanna um do a veteran's waiver. Right? And then it will um take you to the next process that you will be then informed if you've been admitted to um CUNY.
So, once you're admitted to CUNY, all right, um I. I'm a a veteran applies, they they the waiver. Um which is again for anyone who has ever served regardless of discharge status and regardless of how long they've served. They get the fee waiver and then they're on campus. What happens next from CUNY's uh perspective?
So uh I can speak to the on-campus level. So um once the student is uh. Goes through the admissions process and the admission teams recognize that this is a veteran, then the admissions team um. Does the ex- they expedite the application as the CUNY promised um to uh give them. Uh uh expedited admission and uh what they do from there is uh they go through. The individual's application to make sure that it's complete. Um and if there's anything missing, they'll get in contact with us, the Veterans Office. Inform us, hey, this individual applied, uh please have him reach out. We are in need of specific documents. And uh for my campus and then we reach out to the veteran and touch base with the veteran. And uh welcome them down to the CUNY campus. And also uh just kind of go over what uh is needed to complete the application process.
All right, so now we've gone through the application. All right, student vet.
That's for Hostos.
For Hostos, so I'll get to that. I I'm gonna get to that question. But let's say uh, is there more?
N- no, there there will be once they're admitted.
Are you passing notes in class? Is that what you do?
Exactly.
Well, so that's my question. That that you help them through the application process and then they're admitted. And then they arrive on campus. They they're admitted, they're a student, they're matriculated, everything. What happens? What support then comes after that?
So once the student is admitted, I'll receive uh an Excel spreadsheet from admissions. Annotating these are veteran students that have applied. Um and then what I'll do is I'll reach out to the veteran population that was provided to me by the admissions office. And I will get in contact with them and have them come into the office because then there's a series of documents that we need to collect. Uh for example, DD two fourteen, um their certificate of eligibility, which denotes their education benefits. Then from there, uh we go over um, you know, the service members um. If they're service-connected and they have a disability rating through the Veterans Administration, we do the referrals. To um, you know, the proper offices, uh for example, ARC uh for disability uh services and support. And um we sit down with the student, look at the major that they're looking at and it's it's a pretty robust and intense process, but. Um there's there's a a lot of uh, you know, just uh administrative work that's being done at the campus level. On our end to make sure that the students um assimilate beautifully into academia. But it can be rough sometimes.
I like I like your qualifier at my campus. That's your qualifier. But let's um, I I I do want to zoom out for a second because is that a standard practice? Throughout all CUNY campuses that students are guided through the admission process? And then they get to campus and have outreach from a a a veteran's coordinator on campus?
Yes, it is. Um we have veteran-centered directors that also, when they're receiving the information that. Um student has identified as a veteran or dependent or spouse. Then the veteran-centered director conducts a veteran orientation to inform them of the benefits available and also the campus. Um departments like for um Chapter thirty-one students, which is the Vol Rehab um Employment for Disabilities. And the accessible services that are available for them on campus.
So CUNY pol- so this is a a a well-structured um position that CUNY Central has. Um had made clear guidelines of your job is help veteran students through the admissions process. And then once they get to campus, proactively reach out to them to make sure that they to to continue their support.
Correct.
And and what do you do at the campuses that don't have that veterans coordinator? Or what do they do, rather? I think it's LaGuardia and Baruk.
This is why it's integral to have one at every single campus because what happens is. Um as as a veteran that went through that, um you know, I was fortunate to find other veterans. Um that were able to guide me, help me. So what they'll do is, once a veteran comes into um. You know, to a campus setting, they'll look for a community immediately. Um and this isn't just a veteran, this is any population. So once they see a community, uh for example, a veterans club, then. They're gonna go to that community and start asking for support and guidance and help. But if. There is a director, a coordinator, an office that is established within each campus. Um that is the critical piece to helping these student veterans. Assimilate back into academia, back into civilian life. And it really removes a lot of the hurdles um that they're gonna endure. Because it's a daunting process going through, you know, um you know, registration, enrollment, applicant. Applying, getting your class. A- a- and for someone who hasn't ever done it, um coming out of the military, it can be a little intimidating. So that's why it's critical to have one on every every campus and this is why we need your help.
And so what do you, what what do they do? Meaning meaning i- if you're a veteran on one of those campuses that do- does not have a veterans coordinator. Is is the sort of hope that they'll find a student group that like find that community themselves?
So what what most students usually end up doing is um they'll either. They'll look for a veterans office or veterans representative, or they'll look to the central office. And they'll contact them and reach out to them, or they'll look for either um. Uh a prove or a peer, a veteran peer intern. They mostly, you know, they'll they'll look for some type of veteran office or veteran service to to get there.
Does CUNY or can CUNY or have you considered doing it kind of flipped from the way you said? At these campuses, at Hostos, you have a person who's reaching out to them. At the campuses that don't have the veterans coordinator, i- it sounds like you're expecting the student to. Reach out to administration, to CUNY Central. Does CUNY Central fill gaps when there are, when there are um. Well, vacancies in these positions?
Um currently, LaGuardia has a veteran manager that serves as a counselor um until there is a veteran director. Um Baruk right now does not have a veteran director. However, the mission of Central is that we do engage the Baruk students. Um and we work along accordance with PROVE also to um engage through the outreach. That's what Central is there for. Where is missing a veterans director? Central will contact the students.
Please state your name.
Lyora Shadovsky, I'm the director of PROVE. Um one thing to point out is every campus, whether they have a veterans coordinator or not, has a certifying official. So there is a designated person who deals with the G I bill uh needs on campus and that's really important. So Baruk, for example, has a very longstanding certifying official who will do the outreach because the people need to. See him in order to get their veterans benefits straight, in order to get their registration straight. So he is very um very well positioned. So he can't do outreach all throughout the year, but when a veteran comes into school, he is is the person that is designated. While he works for, I believe, enrollment management, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you. I'd like to turn it over for a moment to Councilmember Barron who has a question.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say I've been in the council for twelve years prior to this and we've always supported. Uh students, veterans, students, and will continue to do that, but you're not gonna like this. Honesty compels me to say that I'm very concerned about the role of the American military. In the world and domestically. American military, Haiti was mentioned, they occupied Haiti, the Marines, and supported the exploitation of Haiti. Which most people considered an imperialistic policy. American military went into Vietnam and we mentioned Martin Luther King. Martin Luther King spoke out against the war in Vietnam. And when you look at the history of the American military worldwide, even when Barack Obama was president. The American military expanded its military bases in Africa, called it Afri Command or AfriCom. And instead of humanitarian aid, they put military bases in about fifty countries in Africa. To exploit the economy and another kind of cultural imperialism uh in Africa. I supported the Black Vets for Social Justice under Joe Marchariki. Because these black veterans, we supported them getting jobs and schooling, but they spoke out against the military's role. In the world and they spoke out against even the National Guard suppressing um movements in the United States. So these things have to be said. They're uncomfortable, but they have to be said. America propped up dictators, DuVoyer in Haiti. Papa Doc and Baby Doc murderers. The military propped them up. Isn't that correct? The Shah of Iran. The reason why Iranians hate Americans is because when Moshe Deek in nineteen fifty-five was duly elected. Their leader, American military pulled the coup d'etat and brought the butcherous Shah of Iran. Into Iran and murdered people that opposed him. Samosa in Nicaragua, a murderer. America supported him. Um and Haiti and Chile, you name it, um Pinochet, the general, a murderer. Chile elected Salvador Allende, a socialist president. And America supported a coup d'etat, took him out. So, you know. I'm saying that while we support the students, we gotta tell the. So, you know, I'm saying that while we support the students, we gotta tell the truth. About the role of the American military in the world and stop doctoring it up and go for the justification. That they said they're trying to stop communism from spreading, they're trying to stop, well, let me finish, don't interrupt, I didn't interrupt you. Let me finish, if he wants you to respond, he'll let you respond, but don't interrupt, cause you don't like what you're hearing. But the bottom line is that the American military has been imperialistic, has been capitalistically exploiting countries. Around the world, supporting the murderous regimes, you're not gonna like this, even in the Middle East. America props up the state of Israel and their role in exploiting the Palestinian people. And they murder children and women and justify it as defending Israel. So, I know you don't like it, but there are different perspectives on things that as we are on the college campuses. We gotta look at all perspectives, everybody has one, and that's my perspective. While I will continue to support the city council and what they do for students, we also gotta say. How about the recruitment drives on the campuses, I'm concerned about recruitment on college campuses and even in high schools. They recruit our people into military, and because our communities are suffering economically, sometimes the military is the only way out. Or they may consider the best way out, so they go into the military for economic opportunities, for education opportunities. But the fact of the matter is Malcolm X was against it, Martin Luther King was against this, Maya Angelou that you mentioned. Was against that kind of behavior, and most of our leaders and civil rights to black power was against the role. That the American military has played throughout the world to exploit economies on behalf of brutal dictators. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Baron, I would, I I I would just remind uh everyone here. Uh every council member is entitled to speak for their five minutes, to ask questions. I would also remind everyone here that this uh committee and the hearing is about supporting our student veterans. Who regardless however anyone feels about the American military, uh served with honor. Um and deserve our deepest respect and admiration and support. Uh and that's what this committee hearing, this joint committee hearing here today is for. Is to support our student veterans uh and to work together to find the gaps in CUNY and DVS. Bring to light the incredible work that you're doing, that our service members, former and current, do. Um and support them in the city any way we can. I will also note that not only did I not like many of the things you said, that were said. Uh I also happen to think many of them are factually incorrect, but because.
I I'm not gonna let you say that.
You can let me say that, Councilmember.
Not not factually incorrect. You don't agree with them, but you can't say they're not factually incorrect, these things happen.
I sure can, I sure can, Councilmember, Baron, thank you so much for your five minutes. Um I will continue with the questions about our student veterans.
Councilman, can I just respectfully?
About student veterans, I'd like to keep it on topic, please, and I understand there are a lot of feelings about what was said.
No, no, this, I in in no ways will this be disrespectful, this um. There's a quote that says, um love the soldier, hate the politics. And a lot of the things that the council member discussed are policy issues, not um military issues. The soldier, above all others, the soldier, above all other, prays for peace. For it is the soldier who must suffer and bear the deepest wounds and the scars of war. And for the twenty-five years, when I walked on the grounds of the World Trade Center after the ruins in uniform, searching for survivors. I did that out of love for my country and love for the city of New York. When I went to Iraq, did I agree with it, it's irrelevant. I did what my country asked me to do because of my love for the country, and while it's not the greatest. And while it is not perfect by any means, it is definitely far better than some of the countries where I actually fought in. And had to serve.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn, I'm gonna turn it over to Chair Holden for his lineup for some questions.
And so so now back to the veterans that we're here to serve and uh and to honor. Um I just wanna get into and 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 if I have the Vice Chancellor, I just have some questions as to um. Mentioned that um Hostos, um you you're at Hostos and uh how I just wanna, I'm sorry. Carl, I'll just a a couple of questions before I get to the Vice Chancellor. At Hostos, i- is it you, um you're you're the coordinator, the veterans coordinator, and the rest of the staff is in interns?
So, um no, we have a veterans director, where our office actually falls under ARC. Which is the Disability Resource Center, which is the disability office, and he's our director. We have uh uh two school certifying officials, of which I am one. Um and then we have a peer veterans internship, peer mentor, I'm trying to remember the acronym. With the VIP uh in which you guys funded, thank you so much for that, because that was instrumental in the support of our office. And and many of the other offices within the CUNY.
So you have a very active office.
Very.
Do you have more veterans than the other campuses?
No, I actually have the smallest portion of veterans, believe it or not.
But you have, but you have an extensive office, at least, I mean, compared to, Baruch has no office. And LaGuardia has no office, so they do? Who, what's the second campus? I can't, you gotta put the mic on.
The Vice Chancellor said LaGuardia.
Didn't I say LaGuardia?
So it was um.
They have it.
They have a person that is serving as a manager part-time, so the configuration is different on every campus. And they don't have an, they don't have the structure that the other campuses have, but they do have a person.
Why is that?
Some of that has to do with transitions associated with time and people leaving and, you know, not being. Those positions not being refilled, because if I'm not mistaken, um LaGuardia did have an office. And yeah, so it's a matter of turnover and decisions being made about what can then happen going forward.
Yeah, cause I I have a friend who attended LaGuardia, was a firefighter, but he served in the military. And they actually recruited him, because they had an office then, that's why I was quite quite surprised. And he tells me that that program helped him so much. Um in not only raising his income and getting better, you know, better positions and and education. But he had no intentions of going to school, but he he, because he got recruited, so it's so important to have the office. But when I, you know, taught in CUNY, um the biggest complaint I got, and I I did hear Shaquima Wiley. Mention this, and I think Mervin's, I'd like to ask him a question in a few minutes, but um. Many of the veterans couldn't get the courses uh that they were they were trying to get, many of them were working during the day. And were attending at night to to, you know, obviously get a better job and 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 they had families. So, they had a lot more, just like Shaquima was saying, she had a family, it was it was very, very difficult, and her. Her advisor, or at least there was no veterans coordinator or advisor uh available on weekends. When they, when she was attending or at night, and that was a major complaint I got. Um so I had to be the veterans advisor, even though I wasn't a veteran, I had to try to fight for my students. In getting the course substitutions, because their their courses weren't available in their majors, so I had to figure it out. We had a lot of veterans because of the hours of our coordinator or veterans office on campus that they couldn't access, which was. I thought ridiculous, I said, why don't we do a straddle program, like afternoon and evenings? You know, so they they could reach everyone, rather than nine to five, whatever. And I don't know the hours on campus, but I did get, that was a number one complaint. And it's it almost is, it's self-defeating, because many of them, and here's what I would tell them. Uh they wanted um life experience credit too, they wanted, many were trained in the armed services. They took many of the programs that we could have given them credit for in the college. But if you went to a committee and just, you know, made a, let's say, an application to get these courses transferred. Or get college credit or to get life experience, most of the time they were turned down, and I said, fight for that. Fight, question that, don't just take no for an answer, and many times it worked, if I, but I had to step in. As an advisor, you know, curriculum advisor, to get them their credits. And it saved them sometimes, you know, six months to a year of in in, you know, classes and in expense. Um so Vice Chancellor, let me just ask you on the, the way it was structured with um. Getting their financial aid and so forth, getting their courses paid for, did they, did they still have where they had to do it in a certain amount of time? Or take a minimum amount of credits when they were attending?
Yeah, I so, I I as a school certifying official? Oh, she's a school.
I'm sorry, repeat the question, please?
So, it, many of the students have, they had these um kind of um restrictions. On, you know, taking a certain amount of courses, let's say they had to, if they couldn't get it, let's say the course wasn't offered. And I had to try to do a course substitution, um they could still couldn't get the number of credits to to fulfill requirement. Or they had to also um finish their college education in a in a certain time limit. I know that Prue kind of, you know, fixes that a little bit, right, but I don't know if you have to enroll in that.
No, uh so, sorry.
Alright, it's musical. Sorry.
No, I think, I'm sorry, just to clarify, in terms of adding any kind of time in school, Prue does not help with that, I wanna just be very clear. Um but I think I I think Jessica can answer the question about the time limit and the credit, full-time credit.
Okay, so as a school certifying official, um there is a time limit. Um you, depending on the VA educational programs that you're taking, specifically with the GI Bill. Um and it also has to do with the student wanting to receive the BAH, so a full-time student will require, like, they would want to receive that. Be a full-time BAH, um for Volk Rehab, um the counselor does require them to meet their degree plan in a certain timeframe. Um so, but within CUNY, if a student is not able to have, like, a a course is not available. The academic advisor, the school um certifying official, along with the veteran director, will help um the student find. Another course that will go a part of their degree plan, so it's not that a student is like, oh, well, I have two years in their mindset. Two years to complete this plan, and I'm not able to get my courses, CUNY does um work with the students, so they can find a way to um um. Graduate on a timely basis, the overall objective is if the student wants to um finish their degree within two years, less than that. Or if they want to then transition over to a four-year college, so the each department does service the student, so they can meet their.
But what are the, so it's the GI Bill that's restricting now?
Yes.
What is the time limit for most, like, let's say for a bachelor's degree?
So.
Is it five years?
You have thirty-six months uh on the maximum, under the certificate of eligibility that's provided. Uh and it 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 varies too, uh time in service, um uh active time in service. Um um the benefit that you're utilizing, but um on, for the most part, I've seen. Um at the top end, the thirty-six months, which equates to about roughly, if you're looking at four months per semester, four and a half months. That's four, eight, eight, sixteen, sixteen, thirty-two, so it's about four years, little, just over.
So, if they're going part-time?
If you're going part-time, then um it will.
Which I think most of them are, right?
No, no, we have a lot.
That's what it was when I was.
Yeah, and so it varies also on the student. Um oh, again, some of the veterans, depending on their familial obligations, their employment. Um they're studying at night, so it it really depends on each individual student. Some students have the luxury of going full-time to school, other, um some veterans do, some other veterans do not. They're gainfully employed and have families to serve, so it 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 varies.
I just wanna, how, what what, what percent is part-time and full-time of your veteran students, do you have that data?
Yes.
How many part-time students, how many full-time students? Yeah, can you make sure the mic's on? Oh, it seemed to be.
Okay, we can get, so it's supposed to be red when it's on, okay.
It should be green, right?
That's what I would think, but nevertheless, um we'll get back to you with that specific. I also wanted to address something that you said, Chair President Holden, because you were talking about um. When services are not available, that's a part of why we now have a peer mentor program. Because students are available to students outside of the regular times an office might be open. So, the peer mentor program that's being run through the CUNY Office of Veterans Affairs is critical for that. Because it puts them in relationship with someone who has access to information that is important for their engagement. The other thing I wanted to make sure I addressed is the credit for prior learning. That was difficult when you were there and that you had to facilitate and try to help people understand, no, this does matter. What it is that they did as a supply chain manager for the service impacts the program that they might be studying in. And so there should be some credit for that prior learning that happened in that context. So, we are now looking forward to formalizing that with our Credit for Heroes effort. Using our credit for prior learning process to focus in on what's happening in the military and to apply it as students come in. Because it does matter that they get these additional credits to shorten the time. So, all of these things are linked in terms of what then happens for a veteran as they come to fulfill that timeframe.
So, is there an articulation agreement with um the Armed Forces in any field, let's say, computer programming?
You see me looking at the experts, right? Not to my knowledge, and we will check and see if there is anything that links.
Because I I think we could, we could establish, if one doesn't exist, I'd love to propose that. Where we could, we can get the armed services, I mean, I can't see, so, one student came to me, they were doing um. Um web design, and that's what this person was doing as communications in the, I believe it was the Army. And he knew, he knew web design, I taught in graphic design communications, so. Web designers would come to us as veterans, and they said, I have to take, you know, this basic class or these two classes. And I said, no, you shouldn't, but it was a fight, but I had, somebody had to recognize that, and I found many students just attending the class who were veterans. Or had, you know, computer program or some other, um you know, armed services related experience, and some had extensive experience. Which is, that's why we need kind of like somebody to evaluate, whether it's CUNY Central. To say, you know, you you learned this and, you know, they they show you their resume and it's a very impressive resume. So, I think that's where we could, we could really help our veterans.
And that's the process that Credit for, Credit for Heroes will offer us, that equivalency and that review of the experiences and so forth. To to identify credit, the other place that I think it becomes important, the other initiative that I think becomes important. Is the expansion of our online um programs. Our courses and programs, to make certain that even while you're serving, you can still complete credits toward a degree.
Right.
Um and then have that when you get back and, again, shorten the time.
I think Mervin's had had, I'd hate to have you get up again, but. More mics over there.
Uh yes, to answer your question, like, when, when someone joined the military, we receive a lot of training. And one thing we do have in the military is something that's called a Joint Service Transcript, also known as the Smart Transcript. Where all the training that you received, all the schools that you went to while you were serving, uh you get college credit for the schools.
Is that only at Brooklyn College you're doing?
Negative. Yeah, it it covers CUNY.
So, it covers CUNY?
Yes, and also all universities throughout the country as well, for example, I was a recruiter for three years. When I get my Joint Service Transcript, I was able to skip marketing class at Brooklyn College.
So, you didn't have to fight for it, you got it accepted through the 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 Veterans Office?
Yes.
You got the credit accepted from, so do you, do you have an idea of how many credits they accepted in your, your, I guess, your bachelor's degree or?
With my uh certif- school certifying official? With my certif, school certifying official, I was able to get eighteen college credits.
Eighteen?
Yes.
That's, see, that's, that's great.
Over a semester of college.
Yeah. And I don't know if that's, you know, again, if that's really the norm though. And that's what I, at least when I was in, I, I left CUNY in two thousand seventeen.
The problem is, a lot of student veterans do not know of the Joint Service.
That's it, that's the problem.
So that's what we do at our offices, we make sure we let them know about it, how to log in into the website and pull their transcript so they can apply towards their degree.
But of course, just one other question, because, by the way, thank you, I mean, you're, you're really a hero, serving ten years, you said?
Yes, sir.
In the Marine Corps, right?
Yes, sir.
Ten years, and then you actually helped reopen the Veterans Club, which is, is another, and another really great accomplishment. And I hope you'll have a lot more. And this, you're still at Brooklyn College?
Uh, yes, sir, I am currently a junior at Brooklyn College.
Okay, I love when he says, yes, sir. It just feels. But, so, so how could we, like, what are some of the, like, because I did hear you were, you were praising, like, what are some of the problems, other than the course substitutions, that you thought maybe we could have, you know, helped ma- many more veterans? But what are some of the pitfalls you had in, in, in maneuvering through this, your, your academic career?
One of the major pitfalls was, due to the fact everything was remote, I, I didn't know too much. And I was not in touch with other veterans on campus. When I first, I just applied to go to school. And the only veteran I had contact with was the school certifying official over at Queensborough Community College. And through her, I was able to know a lot more, like, how I could apply my military benefits, as well as the SMART, the SMART Transcript towards my education. And one of the biggest pitfalls is that a lot of veterans are attending school, and they do not know some of the benefits they have available to them, and they're not taking full advantage of it. And I ran into one of my fellow recruiters on campus, and I was talking to him, and I told him, like, oh, yeah, like, I didn't have to take this class because I was able to use my SMART Transcript to skip the class. And he was telling me, wow, I'm actually in this class right now. And it's, it seems like it's.
And that, that's frustrating, that they're taking a course that they didn't really, and they're, you know, many times they're using it. But, and by the way, the thirty-six month issue, that means you'd have to tell your veteran students, front-load your, your, your courses, which is, is I think a flaw in the GI Bill if they're doing that, because we should try to change that, where, I mean, why wouldn't you bend over backwards for our veterans? Especially someone like you, ten years in the Marine Corps, and you got to really front-load your credits, even though it may not fit if you're working, or if you, you know, you had a family, that, that would be an extra burden. And that's what I always noticed, that we didn't really help our veterans enough. We, we went about fifty percent of the way. And so I, I think we need to, to reevaluate the courses, the course substitutions that we could work on, because that was a major, major battle, course substitutions. I mean, I would lose in battling, and I was on the curriculum committee of the department. So I said, I'm giving this person the credit for this class. Well, we disagree, Professor Holden, they said, they, we don't, we don't think, because, you know, they, they only worked two years, and I thought, field experience versus, you know, sitting in a classroom, there's no comparison here. And that's the battle we constantly had. I think you're shaking your head with that.
Yeah, I, I couldn't, yeah, I couldn't agree with you more. To your point, Chair Holden, some of, some of the problems with the Credit for Prior Learning is the Joint Services Transcript, depending on your military occupational skill, which is the job that you get in the military, you know, for the rest of the council members, it gives you a list of credits that are evaluated by the American Council on Education, and then therefore it's transferred into a, an official transcript, which is then given to the college. So what happens is some of the students will come in, and they'll want to go into a nursing major, but in the military they were an engineer. Some of them will not laterally trans over, uh, uh, you know, transfer over. Now, if they stay within the same field, then a good bulk of the credit should be transferable. And that's where, you know, the, the process has to be streamlined. Just evaluating what is the student's degree plan, what was the student's military occupational skill? Can they relate and fill in for specific courses? Lehman does a fantastic job with Credit for Prior Learning, Lehman College, they're very well-known for that, and they have done a fantastic job with that, and it's a model to be emulated. But our, our campus does a good job of, of evaluating, and every veteran that comes in, one of the things that we've worked with admissions now, thanks to admissions, is we ask for their Joint Services Transcript, and we evaluate their credits. Now, in, one of the issues also, because we're a two-year college, some of the credits will fall into an elective, so it'll eat up all of their electives. And then what ends up happening is when they're at the end of their academic time at the two-year level, they'll have maybe one or two courses left to take up, and then it will, you know, it, they'll, they won't have any flexibility because all their electives will be absorbed.
I just, just one other question, and I'll turn it back to my co-chair. CUNY BA, do you use that? They still have CUNY BA?
CUNY BA?
CUNY BA.
Sorry, that's news, we're not familiar.
It, CUNY BA, because I, I think it was around still in, in twenty twenty, because I, CUNY BA was a bachelor's degree that you could put together your own. So that means somebody comes from the military can say, I want to do a CUNY BA, which is a, you got to still get a hundred and, let's say, twenty, you know, twenty credits. But you could put together your own, you know, program, based on your experience in, let's say, the Marines, based on your experience in life, based on your work experience, you get some college credit. But you, the CUNY BA, I thought, was a good option where somebody had dual, like, dual experience in, in different areas, whether it's health, and then, you know, computers, and they wanted to combine, and form their own bachelor's degree. I thought that was a tremendous tool for veterans at that time. I don't, the fact that, is it, is it still exists?
Yes.
It still exists, okay, so.
It still exists, yes.
I did that for Queens College Sociology.
Yeah, we, as faculty members, we had to volunteer to mentor, and, and you, you wouldn't get extra pay, you wouldn't get extra time, you just have to, you know, volunteer. And I always volunteered because I thought it was a great program for students that, especially younger students, who didn't know what they wanted to do. Instead of, you know, going through two, three, they find out in their third or fourth year that they're in the wrong program, and we have a problem. So then I could say, then you're going to go to CUNY BA.
I'm sorry, so Credit for Prior Learning works, they're affiliated, and I just wanted to clarify.
So I just wanted to clarify, the Central Offices of Veterans Affairs works with the American Council of Education within the CUNY Department of Credit for Prior Learning, that we're trying to do the initiative for Credit for Heroes, to inform students regarding the Joint Service Transcript. So everything is coming into fruition, but we need your help with funding.
I'll help. Sign me up. Well, thank you so much. Back to my co-chair.
So I just, I have, it's from Mervin, so I don't know if you want to. You're the, you're the rock star today, man. I, I just, I just want to clarify something, I, you know. So based on the testimony before, it sounds like the, the, CUNY helps veterans with the application process. There's someone on campus who then proactively reaches out to the veterans, right? That's still true? And as part of that, do they go over the Joint Service Transcript?
Yes.
Yes. Over at Brooklyn College, when we have a new veterans on campus, we make sure that we go over the JST, the Joint Service Transcript with them. And also to, every time they are recertifying for the new semester, we'd be sure to go over with them once more. And we also show them the website, how they can go and pull the JST trans, the Joint Service Transcript, so they can apply it towards their degree.
I, I was a little confused, just one from the story you said, because it sounded like you, you ran into someone on campus who was like, oh, I'm already enrolled in this class, I didn't know I didn't have to be enrolled in it. I guess my question is, if all of the steps are happening, where they get that outreach, where the veteran student gets that outreach, and they go over, and it's through admissions, through, through scheduling their courses, why does it exist that a student would be enrolled in a class they didn't need to be enrolled in, if it's, if, if they need to be enrolled in?
So what happens, and, and, and I can speak to this because this still happens on, sometimes students don't self-identify, and for a variety of different reasons. And they're unfamiliar with the capabilities, as Marvin has stated, of, or, or the services that are provided to them. And in addition to that, sometimes they're unaware that the Joint Services Transcript will fill that void, because they are either undeclared, or they don't go to the Veterans Office to seek the support. And despite the campuses reaching out, and some of the Veterans Offices reaching out, some students are just too busy, or, you know, too focused on their day-to-day, and their particular classes, they don't really kind of look at anything, at, at the larger picture of, of what is available to them. And we do an extensive job of promoting this information, and trying to get the veterans to utilize all these benefits. But there, there are some that slip through the crack, unfortunately.
I, I want to ask two more questions, or two more things, and then turn it back to Chair Holden. As part of your process, a stu, a veteran student admitted, helps with, you know, the beginning part, is there consistent, from the Veterans Office, not, not from like the peer mentors, the peer program, but through the Veterans Office, is there consistent or recurring outreach to the veteran student throughout their time at CUNY, whether it's once every semester, or does it kind of just, like an orientation type thing? Here it is at the beginning, you're good.
So I'm going to speak at the campus level, and then I'll turn it over to my colleague to speak at the university-wide level.
Thank you.
So at the campus level, we have a veteran orientation at the beginning of every semester to introduce the veteran population to the services. And I, I am fortunate to have many of our directors participate. They're very actively involved, and they really want to engage the population. So we get financial aid, Bercears, advisement units. Everybody comes in and introduces their office, and, and it's kind of like a show and tell. This is who we are, this is what we can do for you. Then throughout the semester, we engage the students through a variety of different programs that we provide. In addition to the programming, for example, like, we have a financial literacy program that's coming soon. We do the Memorial Day programs, Veterans, whatever it is for that time of year. And we reach out to the students at minimum three times per semester, just to do a welfare check. Hey, can you come into the office, we just need to evaluate your academics, see how you're doing, and, you know, just kind of see where you're at. And if there's any discrepancies that are identified, then we try to mitigate them and address them. And when I mean discrepancy, I mean any barriers, financial hardships, personal, health, academic, and, and we kind of do an all-out assessment. But we try to do it at the campus level. At my campus particularly, we meet with the students at least three times per semester, at minimum. I have students that come every day, and I love it, it's great. I just wish I could attend to them all, there's not enough hours in a day.
And, and is that, is that process, so it's, it sounds like you have a, a process through, at least three times a semester, every veteran student on your list, is that a CUNY Central mandate or suggestion that the Veterans Office will reach out to every veteran X number of times during a semester for as long as they are a student or taking, enrolled, enrolled at CUNY?
So CUNY Central Office of Veterans Affairs' vision is to hire work studies, which Mervin Vincent's also a work study, aside from a peer, and we.
Does everything.
We train our work studies to do the outreach through the social media, through events, through phone calls, through emails, because we believe that one-on-one student outreach is more effective. So in Central Office, there's continuous training on a weekly basis. We give them a list of campuses to reach out to, we also work with the Veterans Center Directors, informing them, we will be reaching out to your student if they need any, you know, resources, internal resources for CUNY, for mental health, physical fitness, nutrition, and outside organizations. So on our Wellness Wednesdays, that occurs every Wednesday, once a week, we send out flyers, social media information, that we have outside organizations coming in towards Zoom. We're partnering with many organizations to provide these services. So there's continuous, ongoing outreach. That is the vision of Central Office.
Thank you, and, oh, there's more.
Sorry, I'll be very quick. For the, the campuses that have proven interns, which there are not, there are eight CUNY campuses at the moment, they have consistent outreach, that's part of the mandate of the social work interns. And they reach out on a weekly basis, an entire, the entire list. They also help put together events on campus, and we aim for at least fifty percent engagement. And the campuses vary in terms of size. So we're very, actually very proud to say that we are at fifty-two point four percent engagement for the fall semester, which is, I think, extraordinary, because we're talking about a lot of veterans. And we're at eight campuses, not at all of the CUNY campuses.
Thank you. Before I turn it back to Chair Holden, I just, I, I, I asked this, I think, at every CUNY hearing, and I was reminded, because Ricardo said the word promoting. So I do a lot on my browser, I obviously do a lot of searching for veterans issues. It's my former chairmanship, obviously, for this hearing. A lot of education issues, college issues, it's my current hearing. I don't get any advertisement. I just searched, I am a veteran in New York City applying for college. And CUNY was not advertised at all, and it also wasn't even one of the first, it's one of the first hits. And so, and, and again, with CUNY, this is like a CUNY Central thing, I think. It's, it's, I ask, you know, about every, every initiative, we talk about every hearing, is there any sort of budget for, for advertising, for promoting the work that you do to engage more students, more veteran students, more veteran students with disabilities? Because, as we always say, the, the, the work you're doing is extensive, obviously you want to make it better, but we, it, it does nothing if no one is engaged, engaged in these programs.
So to, to answer the question, there's, the amount of money that you guys provide, we are deeply grateful. But there are still gaps that need to be filled. And there really is, I, I can't even think of a number to put on it, because it just, whatever you're thinking, times it times two.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking you spend zero dollars. So zero times two would still be zero. Uh, that's, that's why you're, that's. I, I took some math classes at CUNY, so that's why I did that math real well. No, but seriously, like, you know, I know we have the initiatives, and I think they're great, the council initiatives, but you get varying sources of money, and to some degree, CUNY Central has a role in, in deciding where those dollars go. And is there any decision at all that some of those dollars go to any sort of, you know, campaign, public campaign to bring in and attract more students?
So additional resources have been allocated for the CUNY Reconnect effort, and to make certain that there is publicity and marketing. And so, yes, that's on the trains, and it's general, I realize that. If you see any of that, you know that it's inviting and making the overture for people to come, but it is not specific in the way that you are asking. And we need to go back and talk about that. I think we need to really promote the idea that there are particular populations of students who need certain overtures to know that we are open and available, accessible, affordable, and attainable in those contexts. And those are the things that we have to do. So I think you've seeded a few things, and I expect my partner in commitment to be in touch with me. I don't even want to look over there right now, because he's making notes, he's scaring me. But nevertheless, I know that, you know, that I'm going to hear something about articulation agreements, and making sure that we make that clear about the service, the Joint Service Transcript. I know that I'm going to hear more about how we promote what it is that happens for veterans, should they choose to come to CUNY. And together, I believe that we can make that happen, that we can do it in a way that. And together, I believe that we can make that happen, that we can do it in a way that puts the information in the hands. Of those who need it earliest, a- at the earliest point possible.
And before they choose where to go, right? You know, we've we've had, this has been brought up on our hearings on vet here today, veterans. Workforce development, disabilities, of course. Uh online learning, so this is a recurring theme. Um so I, I'm sure next hearing I'll be saying the same thing.
I'm gonna hope not, because I'm hope by then, we'll do the show you.
Yeah, we'll turn it back to Chair Holden.
I I before I I, Councilmember Palladino has uh some comments, but before I I turned to her and we've been joined by Councilmember Brewer. Okay, um some ideas on getting the word out. And I've always, and I said this in another hearing and um. Uh we had a couple of billboards that were in in my district that were peeling for months. And I brought it to the attention of the the sign the sign company. I said, you know, you got this uh, these two billboards on Myrtle Avenue. And I said, it looks horrendous and it's peeling and it's, you know, littering our streets below, it was on a train trestle. Two two side by side. You know what they put up? Recruitment posters. They're still up years later. And I s- and I said, well, you know, in 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 your in hearing that we're not getting the word out. We're not doing much advertising or we're trying. I think we have an o- opportunity and I think you can get the students at New York City College of Technology where I taught, who are graphic designers. To design something and I could, and I think council members, all our council members could. Look at billboards in their district that are, you know, not used. Graffitied or anything else that and get free advertising for our CUNY veterans. Uh or at least to recruit veterans. Um with, because if it's designed, if it's ready, you know, camera ready. We can get those up immediately, they put them up right away and like I said, ye- this is like two years ago and it's still up. So, yeah, we're recruiting for our armed services, but how about helping and re- you know, recruiting education for our veterans? So I'll, if you uh, I'll work with the 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 campus if you want and reach out to them. And they'll give it as a, you know, a senior project, let's say, students who are about to leave. And design, you know, some some advertising for, you know, recruiting CUNY veterans to CUNY. Or recruiting veterans to CUNY. Um I I wanna turn over to Councilmember Palladino.
Uh good afternoon, everybody, and thank you very much uh for coming. Uh first of all, I wanna say uh you are heroes. You are survivors. You are never give up, never given, you are the best of the best. And the very fact that you represented our country in a time of need and when it wasn't in a time of need, you need due respect. And you have represented the very best country in the, on this planet. So despite what might have been said earlier today, I thank you all from the bottom of my heart. Now we'll get back to, we'll talk a little bit about money. Uh I'm reading here, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Was allocated from the city council for fiscal year twenty three for COVA. Now, that's not really a sufficient amount, is it?
No.
Not at all.
Right, that's drops in a bucket. I deal with money, I like to talk about funding and I like to talk about how we can do better. Uh we talked about getting the word out there for everybody to see, everything costs money, nothing is for free. Bob had an excellent idea and we think, I think we should follow through on that. But the bottom line is, I think the uh budget, uh the last veterans hearing or two hearings ago. I think we said total city budget was twelve million dollars for the veterans. Twelve million dollars out of a hundred and one point one billion for fiscal year twenty three is a drop in the bucket. I think we need to do better for that. We need to help our young men and women or middle aged men and women. Who are struggling just to get through every single day. And you, Marvin, you were amazing and Shaquima, where is she? She is unbelievable, I mean, I sat here and I just wanted to like, I wanted to squeeze you both. Because I just can't believe your endurance, see, this is what our city needs, this is what our country needs, this is what our workforce. Needs people like you who will lead by example, strong example, just the fact that Barb remarked that you said, yes, sir. You know, that's whoa, people slap their heads back, but that means a whole lot. And anybody who's fortunate enough to have you and have others like you, don't understand or understand and value you. You should never be undervalued, we have to do the best we can, now my office in District nineteen is a Veterans Resource Center. I wanted to become a Veterans Resource Center when I campaigned for this office. And Commissioner Hendon sought to it that it happened. Now I've had in my office Tanya Thompson and I had a representative from CUNY. Right over here, cuz I'm in District nineteen, which is northeast Queens, so our Queens Borough uh, it's right there. You could throw a rock and hit it. Uh I'd like to open my doors up to you. To set it up, so this is not just for our older veterans that are Vietnam vets. And we even go back further than that, I had somebody come in who was a hundred and one years old and had all his marbles, it was amazing. Just to listen to him talk. But I wanna do whatever I can, I, my office is there for you, every other week was arranged with Commissioner. It's every other Wednesday, this Wednesday tomorrow will be the first one for February. And we are there from uh ten in the morning, they have a representative there from ten in the morning until four in the afternoon. You may want to use my office. For people to come specifically for their needs dealing with school. And going back to the original, how do we get the word out there? I use my social media. And social media is fine, but we need to do other ways, now. If you're CUNY's and you're university, where are you located?
Houstos is in the Bronx.
It's in the Bronx, I mean, we are literally right over the White Stone Bridge. Or the Throgzak Bridge, we're a stone's throw, Lehman's College is right there too. So uh we got a great location and I want you to be able to use my office. And send somebody to my office and we'll do everything in our, you you guys have it, okay? Just let me know if you could work with that when, or every other Wednesday would be great, but I think if we start to localize. What we can to do the best we can for our veterans who are coming out. And need the time and need the skills and need the help to get themselves on computer, figure out where to go, what to do, how to navigate. Use my office and I hope other uh city council people, members will be able to be given. The opportunity my office was given and if we could start to localize, I think that will help us a great deal. Thank you very much for coming today and like I said, you moved me tremendously and I wanna do whatever I can to help you, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um just a couple of um, oh, let's bring up Commissioner Hendon, you're not gonna get off easy like, you know. We wanna bring him up here cuz so I have a li- a line of questioning. Thank you, we're gonna, we might have to bring you back, but thank you so much, I'm sorry for the workout. Thank you, thank you, uh I'm sorry, uh we have so many great panelists and we got wrapped up, but um. I didn't, we don't wanna snub you, Commissioner, I'm sorry you were delayed in your testimony, but um. We, by the way, I understand that you visit other cities to, you know, try to recruit veterans to to go to school here and and live in New York City?
Yep, that's right, Mr. Chair.
So you go on road trips and and?
We we're trying to attract more veterans to live, learn and work here, you know, the larger picture is what can we do to attract them to come? So they can be able to enroll in great institutions like CUNY and matriculate and then great, get great jobs and ultimately stay. And so now Ellen went to the co- to Council of College Military Educators.
Yep, sure, so Nicole and I uh tabled at this uh Council of Co- of College. And Military Educators last uh January. And we actually promoted CUNY's Office um special program for the Office of Professional Studies. And of the their online program. Um and um it it, there's a lot of competition out there, I mean, this is not the only one. Um I just wanted to just kind of qualify a little bit. Um you got very much into the weeds uh on how things really operate. At the university.
If you move the mic closer.
Closer.
To you, they won't have to turn the volume.
Yep, uh but I I, there is a whole lot of decision making that goes on even before you figure out what school you're going to. And I just wanna run you through, just give me two minutes about it. So um you know, po- part of it is when you're preparing for transition, it's what do you wanna do when you leave military service? Have I taken the coursework to support a civilian career? What educational cred- credentials do I need? Do I need to apply to a two or four year academic higher ed institution? Should I be looking at a public school, a public college, a private college? Is it a yellow ribbon school, a for profit school, a foreign school, a flight school? Correspondence and even going back to high school. Will my educational credentials I earned while in the military be accepted by the higher ed institution? You got into that a bit and that was really an interesting dialogue. Uh would attending a technology school and receiving a certification be as useful? Could I uh take advantage of the vet tech providers, on the job training programs? Where will my GI bills benefit go furthest? Will my living expenses be covered by by BAH? Where will I live? Can I afford the housing? Can I afford the transportation? And as a non-traditional student, will I fit into any of these institutions? Is there an active student veteran office, the vet, is there a Veteran Resource Center? And is there a Student Veterans of America chapter? Those are some of the very major questions you kind of go through even before you decide what school to go through. And it's that type of assistance that's really required, you have to be quite strategic. Because you do only have thirty six months at twenty six thousand dollars to cover uh for tuition. Plus, you know, your your BAH and might I add that one of the major issues is that the BAH differentiates. Between the four boroughs here of versus that of Staten Island. Which makes the C- the the colleges Staten Island a less favored school. Because they're receiving about four hundred and seventy seven dollars monthly less than the other, the other uh CUNY colleges. As well as, yeah, 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 for the most part.
And if, I just wanna just take it to thirty thousand speed then I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just to fully answer that question about the being on the road. Uh there was the event that Ellen and Nicole attended uh last year where the focus of that is to get eyeballs. With education counselors at active duty military installations. You have about two million people in the military, two point one million, one point three million are active duty. Eight hundred thousand, like myself and uh, you know, some folks who testified are guard reserve. And so for the one point three million, about two hundred thousand leave service each year. So two hundred thousand people leave active service each year, half of them settle down in a place they're not from. And so there's this Amazon HQ two fight to try to get these folks to come to live, learn, work where we are. And so we're trying to be on offense to feed into the system of having folks come to New York City. And so that conference that Ellen and Nicole attended was one where. The Ed Center at an active duty installation, that's the center of gravity, that's the place where I'm getting ready to get out, I wanna talk to someone about what my options are. And they may say, hey, why don't you look at going to CUNY remotely? Why don't you look at going to New York City in general and look at CUNY in person at some point? Uh we were at the Student Veterans of America Conference earlier this year. And that is just all the different student veteran leaders from various schools across the country to still make that case. Live, learn, work in New York, you may be at school at a place now, why don't you think about coming to New York City, we've got great academic institutions? Let's roll the red carpet out, and so we're trying to continuously put hands on our brothers and sisters who are making the decision. Where do I go once I leave the service to have them decide to go to New York City? So I just hope that answers that question.
And the great lure of CUNY, meaning there's so many campuses with so many different disciplines. And the price is right, I know it, if they come from other states, are they still, they have to establish residency here?
For a period?
The way that CUNY, and I'll, I'm sorry, it's it's honored, eh regardless where I'm from. I'm gonna receive that same rate that someone who is New York City veteran would receive coming to CUNY.
Same rate as a as a as a resident?
Same rate.
So if they come from Arizona to New York City, they can get the in-state right away?
I wanna I wanna flag, the issue for us is. We're, so other two two hundred thousand leave active service each year, we've now received information from the DOD, just as of a few months ago. We estimate that it's about three to five, three to five thousand are coming to New York City. And we're learning more about them, you know, we we believe that the majority of them are coming to school. And we believe that that majority who are coming to school likely attend CUNY, cuz CUNY is is this, it is the the third largest university system in the country. And so we believe we've gotten them to come, the issue is having them stay. A comment was made earlier today about, you know, how do, what do we do to convince them to stay here? And that's a lot of what we also do and we talk with the Vice Chancellor and her team about, we think about at DVS. Everything from a fertile environment, you know, that is cultivated in the schools amongst the student veterans, all the way to. I was able to find a good job opportunity, to I was able to find housing. And so that's the the chess that we're playing to try to, we can easily grow our veteran population. We've just got to be as compelling as possible for them to live, learn and work here.
Yeah, there there are hurdles, obviously, with housing, the cost of living for New York City. But I think it, what CUNY does is it offsets some of that and and just the fact that you have a lot of good choices. And they still have where you can go, let's say, if you were, you went to Queens, you could also take a course eh at Brooklyn or. So it was, at that, uh my tenure was called permit. The permit, so and we used to do that and that was a tremendous advantage. Uh I even utilized that as a student. Um because I I thought a different campus had different selections and something that suited my schedule or where I was working at the time. So I think that's a tremendous advantage, CUNY has so many options and I sound like a commercial here, but it 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 is a, you can recruit. Um if you get, you know, how many um veterans are about to leave the service? Um if you can get that information and go and go to a fair and I I think you're doing that. Um I think that's a tremendous advantage for CUNY, it actually fulfills, it's a win-win. Um it helps, you know, obviously helps helps the veterans establish themselves in private life. And then it also helps CUNY with enrollment, because I know retention in CUNY has always been a problem. Because of the hurdles our students have, always have.
Something I wanna flag too, that we're, we're trying to to solve this riddle, Mr. Chair, um you know, us and CUNY side of it. It's not just a veteran, it's a veteran family. If we think about the typical person who does. You've got, um I graduated from high school, I've done something in the world for one to two years and I joined the military around the age of twenty. Did four to eight years, I'm roughly twenty six years old now, I'm coming to New York City. I likely have already met my partner, the person whom I will start a family with, I'll soon meet them. And so how do we appeal to the entire tribe that that veteran is bringing when they come to the city?
So the family, you know, again, that's, I don't think, that's another area that we have to advertise, the family of of veterans can go to school. And are the benefits the same, I mean, in in tuition or in um? In length of stay and so forth, are the s- the same restrictions of the GI bill?
It depends on what benefit they're using.
Alright, you have to, I'm sorry, that's an important answer here.
I'm sorry, it just depends on what benefit they're using, so.
Is the mic on there?
I- if the spouse is using Postline eleven GI Bill, then it would be the same. If the spouse is using uh survivor's independent bene- benefit, it's not, it's not as robust. So it it's somewhat dependent and and it's very, that's very in the weeds, as Ellen was saying, there's just, there's so many permutations and variations.
Yeah, but that it's a, that's a very important program to that we could utilize.
They are considered veterans on campus. In other words, we we count them as veterans.
That's a, that's a very good uh, so um. Let me just uh get to a couple of uh of scripted questions that we had um. So other, other than your testimony, Commissioner. Um can you discuss any other projects you've worked with CUNY on and or any joint messaging for your agency has done with CUNY?
I'll speak to a few things and turn it over to.
Okay.
To Ellen and to to Nicole. Um it, when we look at CUNY, back to this idea of what are we doing to attract these veterans? And then what do we do to keep them plugged in and then help them have a a strong footprint here in New York City, get a foothold? Uh the, you heard the Vice Chancellor mention, one of the things we've been looking at is this Veterans Promise Program. Where a way to say, look, if you have graduated from New York City High School and you enlist in the military. Do two years of active time at a minimum or six years guard reserve and you have guaranteed admission or deferred enrollment to CUNY. And that's one thing that we are pursuing with uh our our partners at CUNY. Another one is the Tuition Assistance Program that Ellen mentioned, this is with SBS. But largely, we want any serviceman wherever you are in the world, you could be in Germany, you could be in uh, you know. California, you could be in Dakota's. You could be in Germany, you could be in, uh, you know, California, you could be in Dakotas, you could be in Korea, that you can use CUNY as a remote learning option. Each active service member has roughly forty-five hundred dollars tagged to them per the Tuition Assistance Program. So I'm active service member, then I can spend up to forty-five hundred dollars in tuition assistance, you know, for me to attend school during that federal fiscal year. And so we want to make sure the folks know about the remote offerings CUNY has. Not just with SBS, but also with, say, a KCC Flex, or Kingsborough Community College.
But on, on that point, just before I forget, well, let's say they're in the reserves and they get called up. Midway through the semester, what happens? And they can't work remotely because they're being deployed somewhere. What, or what happens in, in that?
I defer to my forensic duty on that, yeah.
Sorry about that.
So the question is, what happens to our veterans that are reservists?
In the reserves, mid, yeah, mid, mid, mid semester, let's say.
Okay, so they don't, they do not get penalized if they have to go over to active duty? What we do is that we withdraw them from the classes and then they can continue on their education. If they have the opportunity, depending on the mission, then they can do their online classes.
So that's the only option, withdraw from the class?
It, well, it, it depends on the latitude of the professor, so sometimes the professor will allow them.
And then you can get an incomplete?
Yes, correct, they can get an incomplete, exactly, and then the professor will.
See, I know these things, so. But, well, I should after forty-four years. The, but it would seem that we could been, we could do a little bit more to accommodate them because they are serving our country. So I think we, yeah, we could, I mean, you might have some suggestions, I might have some also, that we could, we could talk about. Because I think we should give them any, every benefit possible to further their career, whether it's remote, uh, at a future time, whether it's, uh, the incomplete, the only problem with the incomplete, you know, you have until the following semester, like a week or two into it, it was at that time. I think we could actually stretch that out if we had to and figure out something and to work with the veterans. So there are, so I mean, I think there's some internal things we could do at CUNY. Not, not to, I don't want to get off of your, your expertise, Commissioner, but there are things we could do, I think. Because I, that was frustrating, we had a few students like that, and they did have to drop the class. Which was, like, it, it sets them back. Um, are you referring, you, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
I was mentioning attracting, I was going to pass to Ellen, keeping the, the veterans plugged in the community. I just mentioned as far as attracting veterans, the, what we want to do to tie more of our active service members into attending CUNY remotely, and Veterans Promise to kind of make sure that those who enlist here from New York City stay within the CUNY ecosystem as far as knowing, hey, I have guaranteed admission, deferred enrollment to CUNY once I finish a certain amount of time. And then there's Credit for Heroes that the Vice Chancellor mentioned. Just ways to deal with, how do we, uh, account for all of that experience? And all those credentials someone's got in the uniform, once they transition into an academic environment? And then I'll defer to Ellen when it speaks to this next piece of it, which is, okay, we've got you here. Now how do we keep you plugged into our community? What are we doing with our mentorship, those aspects of it, benefits that we offer, or the cultural pieces? And so I'll, I'll defer it to, to Ellen.
Sure, so, um, a couple of things that we've, we've done just to, just to talk a little bit about our partnership. Um, recently, Bronx Community College co-hosted the Veteran Bronx Crisis Suicide Prevention Crisis Mapping Team with us. Um, they also, um, they, they've also hosted a meeting of the Vet Connect NYC Partners, uh, which we greatly appreciated. Um, DVS in collaboration with the Mayor's Office, um, of, uh, of Mayor's, um, New York City Mayor's Office to Advance New York City, uh, we raised money to provide scholarships for CUNY students to attend the Student Veterans of America National Conference back in two thousand twenty-two in LA and brought about twenty-six students over to LA to attend. That's a very special conference. Um, we've also have paid the registration fee for Lisa Bethia, um, who is the director, to attend the Student Veterans of America National Conference this year in Florida. Uh, we've, we've, as we previously talked about, promoted the Online Graduate School of Professional Studies Program. We encourage CUNY students to register for the VA Works Study Program. And we advocate, uh, for the expansion of the Fair Fares Program for, for students themselves. Uh, with respect to mentoring, et cetera, et cetera, we're all part of something called, uh, a very major program called, um, the, yeah, Experiation of Term Service Program. It's a national program where the, um, the representatives from this national team go to the various installations to register those transitioning service members who will be, uh, leaving service. And it's really at that time where, um, we really encourage, uh, these, um, expiring service members to come and to sign up for a mentor, particularly if they're coming to New York City. Uh, so we're very active with trying to create, recruit sponsors, of which I am one of those. So I do mentor a, actually a, a student from Fordham University and have lived and have listened to some of the trials and tribulations she's gone through um, in terms of trying to proceed and becoming, uh, integrated, uh, back into civilian life.
So how many, how many staffers at DVS do you have for the education component that are assigned to them?
Yeah, so I have Nicole, who is our on-the-ground person who helps to orchestrate. Uh, and in fact, um, maybe Nicole, do you want to say a quick hello to, to your grandfather, who happens to be a veteran, who's watching the program and streaming at this time? So we think it's important.
Yeah, so my name.
Can you pull a Michael, yeah, thank you, okay.
My name is Nicole Orlando. Like Ellen said, I'm a policy analyst here, I'm proud granddaughter of a United States Navy veteran. I also am a CUNY Baruch graduate. Um, so, like Ellen mentioned, I work with the Veterans on Campus Network. So this is, uh, student veterans from campuses all over the city, CUNY and non-CUNY. And we tried, the pandemic has halted us. And now we're trying to bring that back, bring that sense of community back. So we put on, uh, different events like a barbecue, information sessions. Whenever we have, um, you know, a private partner reach out to us and have like a movie screening or something for a play, we share it with our CUNY student veterans, as well as our other student veterans that we deal with. Um, so we're just building up this community back to what it was pre-pandemic and just making sure we're sharing all the resources that we get in real time with the student veterans as well.
Thank you, thank you for that. Um, so, Commissioner, um, you know, I looked at Vet Connect. What happens after a veteran submits a form to, to Vet Connect for assistance with the education? Like, you mentioned, I, we, we have only two people that are, you know, part of the whole DVS veteran schooling?
There are thirty-five of us in DVS.
I know, I know, I know, I just wanted, for the record.
Yeah, it's, um, there are thirty-five, and you've got Nicole oversees the Veterans on Campus effort, and she reports to Ellen, so yeah, and then, yeah, so when it comes to.
And so they're the two experts.
This is, this is, these are, these are.
So your work, is your workload, uh, you know?
We wear a lot of hats.
Okay, you wear, oh, you wear a lot of hats, so you're not only assigned to educate.
But we also make wooden tables and stools, remember?
That's right, that's right. Then, no, that was, that's.
Let's not forget about that.
I, I'm not, you're carpenters too, that's.
Well, I'm good at.
So can you just walk us through, once they apply, uh, or they want information on Vet Connect? By the way, I think that the education component could be more prominent on the Vet Connect, I, I think. It was a little hard.
If you go into, um, DVS, uh, I'm sorry, uh.
The website is nyc.gov/vetconnect. Uh, and just to, I guess the easiest way to explain it is, think of us as a pizza shop, where there are different ways to order that pizza. You can either call us to order it, you can visit our website to order it. You can go to our online ordering portal, which is Vet Connect, uh, so nyc.gov/vetconnect. You can also message us on social media, uh, as far as just different ways, or email us to be able to receive the services. No matter how the service comes into us, it ultimately goes to our Care Coordination Center, our Care Coordination Unit, and they triage it and decide, what do we do with this? Uh, at the agency, we do three things. We either provide referrals, so if it's something where we know a great group that can support the veteran with this, we make the referral. It's synergies, so anything where we work with stakeholders to make a one-plus-one-equals-three dynamic, so if it's something that involves the synergistic aspect, we do that. And the other piece is direct services. The only direct services we offer at DVS, Mr. Chair, are, uh, benefit claims, so helping veterans navigate the, just whatever benefits they can receive from the VA. Working with our veterans who are housing insecure, helping them obtain housing. So anything that involves, uh, someone who's couch surfing in the shelter system, helping them, you know, go up a notch within that housing ladder, as we call it, wherever they are. Uh, another one is working with our veterans who have passed away and do not have the means to have the appropriate funeral and burial honors, that's indigent veterans. And then the other service is simply picking up the phone on behalf of the city when they say, hey, I'm a vet, I need help, is a service in and of itself, because that's something where we get things that come in about from three-one-one through our site, other agencies reach out with us. And so really, you hit us, and then it goes to our Care Coordination Unit. They decide which of these three buckets is go-to, and how do we kick this out to the appropriate entity so we can execute?
Can, can we put a, an ad on, on your page to link to CUNY?
We have, so we got.
Advocating for CUNY all the time.
Let's see how we can do this, good question, because what's tough here is, I love CUNY. There are more than a hundred and twenty schools, institutions of higher learning in the city, and so we've got to be mindful.
Yeah, but we love CUNY.
I, 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 I taught at CUNY for years as far as teaching ROTC, Mr. Chair, so I'm with you, I, I love CUNY too.
The higher end, the higher end committee.
There's only one, there's only one public university system in New York City.
Touche, touche. Um, we can look, we can look into it to get back to you.
So the answer is yes?
I'm hearing yes.
I just want to make sure, I, and for me, it's just the same thing I tell all groups as far as making sure that we are, there's not an appearance of pride as far as how we're promoting things. Even when dealing with the Vice Chancellor, it's about, we're selling New York City, and so, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Brewer, you have some questions?
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner, um, and thank you for being nice to my family. First of all, on free advertising, I think CUNY does this, but the kiosks for, um, whatever they are in the, in the streets are all free. I assume CUNY advertises there already, but I'm just letting you know, it, there's one thing for free, and that's the kiosk, because I do it all the time, so it is, it is free advertising.
And we at DVS have used, like NYC, all have used those kiosks.
Right, exactly, so I'm just saying for CUNY to talk about it in terms of the, uh, military. Couple of questions. First of all, is there an evaluation of any of these programs? This is more for CUNY than for you, but I think Ellen knows everything. I know Ellen, she knows everything. So is there an evaluation, do you know, of any of the programs that you're talking about? That, you know, in terms of, um, CUNY or others that you're using?
Um, I, we're actually working pretty closely these days with, Columbia University has a separate entity that is, it's, um.
I'm sorry.
Pull it towards you.
Sorry, okay, yeah, thank you. Um, so there's the Center for Transition and Integration at Columbia University. Um, they are kind of our secret sauce in how we're putting together our Transition Assistance Program series. Um, and they really will focus on that, that assistance that's needed prior, before you select a school. And clearly, CUNY has a clear advantage because of the tuition dollar associated with it. Uh, and the fact that you can go to a CUNY and then save some of your money to use for graduate school in New York City also. So we're, we're real, we're real good about try, trying to get that, you know, it's that front-loading conversation that you had earlier that's really important. Part of the whole concept is how do you get our folks to be more strategic, okay? And, and really get the decision-making prior to making that selection of the school? Because you don't want to waste your money. The, the woman that I'm mentoring at this point, she's just about finished with a degree in social work, and I turned around and I said to her, okay, maybe I could help you figure out a job because certainly, social workers are high in demand. She said, oh, she wants to be a dietitian. And this is after she spent some significant dollars and cents attending Fordham University for that particular reason. So these, so, you know, it's part of it is how do you get them, how do you move, move the curve earlier to really sit and chat, and chat with him? And that takes expertise, and, you know, again, Columbia Center for Transition and Integration helps with that.
It's out of general studies, I know well that center.
I just want to say too, I'm, I'm, Councilwoman, just, I'll defer to CUNY as far as any evaluation, question specific to CUNY. For us, we do have a Military and Family Community Survey that we've now begun to issue, which is something that was, you know, passed in law by the council, just to say that. We had our first survey, which was instituted, I believe it was last year. And our next one will be, uh, within the next year as far as putting that out, and then it'll be in a four-year battle rhythm going forward. We'll think through how we can put questions in there that can help us scratch the itch of learning more, that can be of value to all of us with ways we can help the community, just wanted to flag that.
I appreciate that. And in terms of being in New York, housing, housing, housing being the challenge. So can people stay on any military base as opposed to trying to find an apartment in the city of New York? Is that something that has come up or an issue?
I'll speak, and then if any of our CUNY counterparts want to mention, so it's with the housing at Fort Hamilton, it's privatized housing, and so it's, you know, so anyone can stay there. Priority goes if you have some sort of military assignment that links you to it. But right now, you can be someone who's in general public who stays there. Uh, but that's at a market rate, so even though it's at Hamilton, it's still market rate. Uh, for us, when we think about housing, uh, first off, we tell our veterans to go to nyc.gov/vethousing. NYC.gov/vethousing.
Right.
We also help people connect the dots with Mitchell Lama Connect.
That's my bill, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very familiar with that bill. That's my bill.
And, and Housing Connect, and making sure they know about the Mitchell Lama Veterans Preference as well, and the state programs, so we, uh, we have an urban fellow with us now who just focuses on affordable housing issues, so we can try to help triage things. And something someone said earlier, something that we do, um, whenever a student veteran has an incident where they feel like, and I came here to school, I remember a landlord saying, I need extra money as far as your deposit because you're a student veteran, I don't know how to trust this income. I didn't know at the time that I, where I could go, and we tell people, look, come to us. We connect them with Commission on Human Rights so that they know what is and is not acceptable, and then CCHR will reach out to that landlord. It's nyc.gov/vetrights.
I know, but these are harder, this is hard stuff to try to do. And I'm just, so there isn't any other military housing except the one Fort Hamilton? That's it, is what you're saying, okay.
And even that, and I, and I'm sorry, you said Fort Hamilton, yeah, but it's also, it's also privatized. These are, it's privatized, it's, it's on a base, but it's privatized.
All right, I'm just trying to think of other suggestions, that's something that maybe as a city we should be thinking about. That what kind of military housing we could build with the Dormitory Authority in Albany? Something to put on the agenda.
Absolutely.
Um, homeless, so my understanding from years and years and years of these hearings is that coming from the military, this may have changed. It's really hard to know who's coming to New York City. Now, you're trying to get people to come to New York City. Do they tell you, and for, for every single person who's coming, I'm, I'm asking, because this is about homeless as well, as students and potential New Yorkers. So every single person who leaves, you know, the military, tells you when they're coming? Does somebody tell us when they're coming to New York City?
What we get is, um, is a, it's a DD two-fourteen where it just says, what the last address is that I want someone to know about when they look at me. And that's all we have, and so when we say the three to five thousand, uh, just based on the past few months receiving this data, that's just based on who's put that. And so we're running these seminars now that Ellen and Nicole are spearheading, where we're having tran, welcome-home seminars. Uh, for, we're looking, doing four to six of these every year for these service members, so we'll learn more about them and their plus ones.
And these are the people who had New York City as an address before they went into the military? Or everybody who says, I'm going to New York?
These are people who, who said, I'm, these people said, I want my last known address to be that of New York. So it could be someone who, my mom, this is her address, I'll put it down, or someone who, I'm going to go to Baruch, I'm going to put it down. Uh, what's key on this, this is an internal thing with the DOD, but they are, we pray that by the end of this calendar year, we won't just know who has just come to New York City. We'll also know who has said, within a year, I'll be going to New York City. And so that's some internal things going on with DOD where soon we'll receive the, yo, so we'll know.
We've been trying for thirty years to get that, Commissioner, that would be fabulous. Um, honorable and dishonorable, how does that play and what are the numbers? Is that an issue in terms of going to CUNY? Obviously, not coming to New York City is not a problem. But is that an issue for getting into CUNY or any of your services?
I'll defer to my counterparts as far as on the CUNY side, yeah.
So their discharge.
My husband's a vet, so I, I listen to all this stuff at home, go ahead.
So, uh, Councilwoman D, the, uh, the discharge status is irrelevant when you come into CUNY. So we don't, we don't really look at that.
Okay, all right.
Which they're going to make explicit on their website.
Very much so.
Final question is just, we got a lot of homeless. I think I managed to get a hundred and thirty-five of them in a hundred and thirty, three-thirty West Ninety-Fifth Street, so I work with them all day long. How, I mean, when they're coming to New York, sometimes they end up homeless, right? How do we get them into your system as opposed to into the shelter and the other alternative? Is that something that you're working on? People, people end up homeless, veterans. We don't want them to be homeless, we want them to have an education, et cetera. But particularly for some of the younger ones, how do we get them, or how are you focused on trying to get them into an educational track as opposed to the, or maybe a lot of them are at Bellevue and at CUNY, just like so many others? I'm trying to see how CUNY and homeless can work together.
Uh, so we, um, there's a, just to, to, to start with the data, most recent point in time count is four-hundred-and-eighty-two homeless veterans in the city of New York, just to, to put it out there.
You're talking about in the shelter system?
As far as shelters, and that's the shelter system, that's eight street homeless.
Right.
And then the remaining balance of four-seventy-two in the shelter system.
Right.
Um, right now, we're actively, I was going to make sure I got this name, we're working with our partners within government to, uh, see if we can identify more veterans who are in the different services and systems that the city uses. And there's a portal that VA has called the Status Query and Response Exchange System, Squares. And it's a VA web portal whereby you can enter someone's basic information, and it comes back and says, is this person a veteran or not? And so we're in active talks, uh, you know, with our peer agencies about what can we do to enter this information? agencies about what can we do to enter this information. Nothing is reported to the VA. So you can maintain data integrity, so, so that you can know who you have out of all who may be in, say, the shelter system, or out of all who may be using health and hospitals, or all who may be you, within ACS system.
Yep.
Who are the veterans here? Because not everyone's self-identifying. And so we want to take that data and hopefully get to a place where we can know who's in the system and then better help them. And then something else I had to mention, you know, on the self-identification point, some things were said earlier, I just want to say that, let's not forget, many of our veterans do not self-identify, and there's several reasons why. One of those reasons can be simply the fear of my own community looking down on me, saying things that may be painful to me. And so I just want to acknowledge that as far as what we're up against with, even the numbers with CUNY, the, I, and it's not their fault, I don't believe they know who all the student veterans are, nor do we, because you could have someone who's not using the GI Bill benefits but going to CUNY. They'd say, "Look, I want to save my benefits for my kids. So I'll be the typical student you see who's a, who's working full-time and going to CUNY," and it not show up. And so that's, you know, as much as we may ask the question, when you couple this with knowing that roughly, you know, you see me, there are two to three people who aren't identifying, and you have some folks who may say, "Look, I want to keep this in my back pocket for now." Um, that's a community we may not be aware of. And so I just want to flag these things. Not at all, nothing at all against our friends at CUNY, or anyone.
No, I agree. I'm just finally, so I assume that the people who are homeless, the 400 and something, are leaving money on the table essentially, if they could be using it for education. So.
It, it's, I'll, I'll, let me, I'll start, and I'll defer to anybody else on it. So it, it's, yes, you know, to say that. I mean, we, running the numbers, looking at the, the, the VA puts a gross domestic expenditures report out saying, "Here's how much money's coming to New York City from the veterans who are here." Estimates roughly $42,000 that each veteran brings in. It's just federal benefits.
Right, I know, but we're.
You know, so.
And all about those benefits.
Yeah. And so, and so it's, it's, um, I, that's one way to look at it. Another way to look at it is, we're working hard to try to identify people so they even know about all that's available to them. We have people who are worried about taking their benefits. Another example, many of our vets don't even know, there's a state scholarship program just for combat veterans with honorable discharges, where the state will pay up to eight semesters of undergrad, six semesters of grad school, or six semester equivalents of vocational training. It's a veteran tuition award program. Many of our people don't even know. And so a lot of our work is to try to inform vets about all these things so they can take advantage. Like, someone said something about, you know, uh, you know, my peer didn't even know about the joint services transcript. Goodness, you know, it's like, this is something we're trying to scratch the itch on, uh, Madam.
I think everybody knows about the property tax exemption, though. Go ahead, sir. I mean, I'm, I'm laughing, because they, people all know about the property tax exemption when they're vets, but go ahead.
I'm definitely taking advantage of that.
Yes, I know. I am too. I'll be honest with you.
So, Councilwoman, to, 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 to add to the Commissioner's statements in regarding to the homelessness.
Money on the table.
So, some of the homeless veterans, um, you have to keep in mind, not every veteran may be eligible for education benefits.
No, I understand.
And then in addition to that, um, depending on the specific veteran, um, they may not have access to those education benefits because of their time in service or time. Um, and, and those are some of the key issues that we face. In addition to that, um, as far as the services that are provided, the Veterans Administration has a very strict criteria to their definition of homeless. So to them, you literally have to be homeless on the street, not in a car, not in someone's couch. Um, even though you're homeless, um, you have to be literally on the street, and that's their complete definition before they get involved. And it's a really grueling process. They go through the social work. So it takes months, uh, maybe two, three months before an individual can get something stabilized. But as far as the education benefits, it, most post nine eleven era veterans are, um, recipients of this very lucrative GI Bill.
Yep.
Anyone prior to that, um, the, 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 the GI Bill is not as, you know, as bulky, uh, financially as, as this new one is. And, and that, um, you know, is, is part of the problem. But for those that are post nine eleven, um, era veterans, they definitely have a significant amount of money that will be at their disposal if we could get them stabilized, you know, in, 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 uh, in secure housing. I, I work with this not only at my college level, but also in the Bronx.
All right. Thank you very much.
And I, I just want to say, this is an opinion from what you said at exchange about homeless veterans. Uh, and this isn't just about veterans. I think we've seen this echoed in the non-veteran community as well, where many of our veteran female parents may be couch surfing, maybe in spots where they're not in the shelter and we're not seeing them. So it's about, how do we even identify this group too? Because female veterans is the fastest-growing demographic in our community, and we want to be able to treat them, yet, you know, if you've got that child and you may be staying with someone, but you, you need the help because you are check to check and you're keeping your head above water, you literally are couch surfing while we intense purposes. How do we find you? And that's something else we're, we're internally, you know, uh, thinking about.
Thank you very much.
So I, I have one more question, and then we can, we'll move on to public testimony. Um, or, or one more set. And first, just to recap, it sounds like there's a lot of confusion on, on the front end, right, which is veterans having access to programs at CUNY, right, that advertising piece. But then, once they get to the application process, it sounds like there are some veterans who feel as though if they say that they are a veteran, they will be required to use their GI benefits. That's what it sounded like you said in your testimony, Commissioner?
Or it's, I don't want to, it, you've got, two different things happening at the same time here, um, Mr. Chair. One is, many of us choose not to self-identify. I, I, I wish it weren't that way, but many of us choose not to self-identify. Then you've got folks who say, "Look, I, let me hold on to my, I want to, I want to give my benefits to my kids," or pass it on to a spouse, something like that. And so, "Let me just work and then go, go to school," and someone who, who could simply, we just, it just not be on our radar because of that.
But irrespect, irrespective of, 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 let's say they would otherwise identify, but are, it sounds like you're suggesting that for the people who would identify, they may not want to identify as a veteran on their application because they may feel compelled to use their GI benefits. Does that sound?
I can't speak to that. I won't say that. I won't say that. I'm, that's not, it's not about being compelled or not. It's more so about, I have this scholarship thing, this is incredible opportunity where I can pass to my children.
I'm more concerned about that first step.
It's not, it's not, it's, it's.
About like even ident, that first thing, I'm more concerned about even identifying the veterans so that they can get that outreach in the first place. But I see by the headshaking that it's not really the case that people don't identify because they'll feel compelled to use their GI benefits.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that, those two, that's, that's separate. They're not linked as far as, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, no, thank you for clarifying that. Uh, and the, I guess my, my last question is, I understand that there's work done together between DVS and CUNY. But what sharing is there, or are you even allowed to, share information about students so that there's a continuum of services, so that the student who identifies as a veteran at CUNY is not suddenly left in the lurch after they graduate or get their, you know, get their degree or their certification, that they can continue to receive benefits and information from our city agency, the Department of Veteran Services?
Currently, uh, we don't have a data sharing agreement in place. Mr. Chet, that's a great question. Uh, with something we'll definitely discuss offline. I can tell you, our main focus right now, we're working a data sharing agreement with the Speaker's office for the city council, so that all of the city council members will receive the contact information for the veterans who are in their district, and that's in real time. So we've been knocking that out. We've also been doing data sharing agreements with our peer agencies. We haven't had discussion with CUNY yet, but we will, and I appreciate you for flagging that.
Yeah, I, I would, and I understand, since, since we first met, I know you've been working with the city agencies, and I, you know, I recognize student information is certainly a, a lot more complicated than, uh, than other information from city agencies with, uh, non-students or, or adults. Um, but again, I, I, and CUNY is also not really a city agency, so I recognize the complication. But I think if we're truly going to support our events, uh, uh, our veterans, um, that in that intake process, much as we do in the city agencies, there should be some sort of question about sharing, um, with DVS. And I would imagine that if someone said, "Hey, do you want assist, you know, free housing or, or, or financial support for housing, and all the other wonderful benefits DPA, DVS provides," uh, that may be incentive for some of those students to, to self-identify as veterans. And I would, and, and I would imagine there may be some students who don't know why they would self-identify as a veteran in the first place if they don't already know the benefits, uh, entitled to them.
So there are several, uh, several CUNY colleges and, uh, colleges that are on our Vet Connect system already. So there is a sharing that does occur between, um, for those that are get referred to us from, from, from CUNY. A lot through PROVE, actually, through Lior. So that is, that is happening.
We need more chairs. That's all we need.
Okay, so we have FERPA. So there's information, like, um, certain personal information that we cannot do the data sharing. However, we can refer, um, students to DVS if they need resources. But we cannot share, um, students' information, like social security numbers, if the student is not willing to, um, divulge that information. So FERPA does not allow CUNY to, um, provide that information.
No, I, no, I certainly understand and want to re, obviously respect the law and the intent behind the law, um, which is why it was really about putting it as a question on the application, uh, which, you know, you're not going to automatically share, which is to say, "Are you a veteran? Great, you know, what was your, whatever, a, active, reserved, sh, should we, with your consent, you're probably 18 and over if you're in college, or if you were in armed services, you're certainly above 18, um, with your consent, share this with DVS to provide you more services." And I, and I think, um, that that is certainly some, I, I would encourage you to, to explore, to really provide our, our veterans with all of the benefits to which they are entitled, and to provide DVS with some of that information that they are craving, which is to identify as many of the veterans in New York City as possible. Okay. Uh, with that, we wrap up this section of the hearing. I want to thank you all so much for your testimony, and especially the students, uh, and the service members, um, who, who testified today. We're going to move on to our public testimony.
I just have one gift to give. I did.
Uh, it can't be more than $50.
Don't worry. It's less, maybe, maybe five cents per page. Um, it's a data set.
Oh, wonderful.
Related to student veterans. I thought you liked more of that.
Okay, yes, please. A number of the committee members were asking about that. Thank you so much. All right, Fer. I, I've been informed by the sergeant, from the sergeant-at-arms. Um, we'll have two minutes for public testimony, uh, plus additional time for council member questions. Three minutes. Three minutes. Three minutes. Um, all right, so our first panel is Joe Bello, Derek Coy, Lisa Carling, and Vishal Balani. You can step up. To the table. And again, before you testify, please state your name. Vishal? Would you like to start off? Sure. So let's, let's go to Lisa. I'm, I read left to right.
Good, good, good now. Okay. Whoa, ho. Uh, my name is Lisa Carling. I am Director of Accessibility Programs at TDF. Many thanks to Chairs Holden and Dinowitz and members of the Higher Education and Veterans Committees for providing me this opportunity to testify. TDF is the nation's largest performing arts service organization dedicated to the audience. Previously known as Theater Development Fund, TDF brings the power of the performing arts to everyone, including veterans. TDF Veterans Theater-Going Program began in 2017 thanks to support from the Committee on Veterans. Fast facts, since then, distribution of 4,000 tickets, discounted tickets to city veterans and their families. Admission at no cost to 53 different Broadway and Off-Broadway shows. Accessibility accommodations for any vets with vision, hearing, mobility loss, or PTSD. Talk backs after each performance when possible. Ticket distribution partnerships with over 50 veteran service organizations throughout the five boroughs. CUNY Office of Veterans Affairs is our largest ticketing partner. CUNY has distributed 550 program tickets to some of its roughly 3,000 student vets since our program began, and giving them the opportunity to enjoy some of Broadway's most popular shows like The Lion King, The Book of Mormon, as well as Radio City Christmas Spectacular around the holidays. During the pandemic, with free Broadway HD memberships, Luis Saltero from Lehman College and Rob Timmons from New York City Tech moderated discussions for us, keeping the veterans community connected, especially the CUNY vets. We appreciate the Committee on Veterans' support for our program this year, and I hope you can join us for one of our spring shows. But the decreased funding had direct impact on over 200 veterans, many of them CUNY vets, their being our largest partner with its long wait list for tickets. We sincerely hope you can please restore the 22,000 cut from our allocation so we can help bring more of the healing power of the performing arts to our city's veterans, especially CUNY vets. In closing, here is feedback from one of our program participants. Quote, "My mother recently passed away from cancer, and as a female veteran, the Beetlejuice play really helped me put my emotions and thoughts into a better perspective. As a female veteran, theater is a perfect place, even on a Sunday afternoon, to let go, enjoy the moment, feel like part of a community, and let go of negative emotions and grow." End of quote. Thank you.
All right. Vishal? All right. You're not going, you're not going first, Tony.
I'm not going first anymore. All right. I'm gonna try to keep this as very short as possible. But, thank you. My name is, uh, Vishal Balani. I'm a resident of, uh, Floral Park in, in the Queens section, so Northeast Queens. Uh, thank you to the committee chairs and, uh, council members, staff, and the veterans who are here today. Today's hearing, uh, on veterans hits very close to home. A valued mentor and former tennis teaching colleague of mine, uh, served an active duty during Vietnam and asked me not to share his age during today's hearing, but, uh, completed his bachelor's degree over the course of six years, uh, over 15 years after the completion of his service. I cannot add insight with regard to veteran services in excess of what has been presented here today by the many thoughtful speakers who have preceded me. I'm here today to note my belief that, uh, and that of many others in the city of New York, that integrity and ethics must underpin debate about those challenging issues that we face. I have the misfortune of living in New York's third congressional district, which means that as of January 3rd, my representative in Congress has been Mr. George Santos, also known as Anthony De Volder, among many other aliases. It would not be a stretch to say that this individual who fabricated, among many other things, the idea that he attended both Baruch College and New York University, would not be suited to opine on any of the issues in front of the committee today. However, one of his strongest supporters, and someone who still refuses to call for his resignation, continues to sit on this panel today, an attempt at normalcy that is profoundly shameful. Councilwoman Vicky Palladino campaigned vociferously with Mr. Santos and was one of his earliest supporters. Other lowlights of this parade of horribles include fictional attributions of his grandparents escaped from the horrors of the Holocaust, his mother's death on nine eleven, and a subsequent death of hers due to nine eleven-related cancer, and a disgusting theft of $3,000 from a disabled homeless veteran that was designated for life-saving surgery for his sick service dog. Sapphire, the veteran's longtime friend, passed away, driving the veteran, Richard Ostoff, to experience severe suicidal ideation and forcing him to panhandle to raise money for her cremation. This seemingly constant shocking fact has not. This seemingly constant shocking fact has not phased Councilwoman Palladino. At a meeting of the group of which she is president, the Whitestone Republican Club, she doubled down on her support for Mr. Santos, declaring that she wanted him to remain in office because of her belief that a Republican candidate would not be able to win the seat in a hypothetical special election, referring to the seat as fried. Anything less than a call for his resignation indicates complicity in comfort with his fraud, grift, and web of lies. Issues are not given the deference and respect that they deserve when compromised voices are able to masquerade as legitimate. It is easy to vocalize support for police and military, but one's true feelings are betrayed when they question, as she has done, whether the sedition of the January sixth attack on the U.S. Capitol was bad and posts adoringly about former President Trump, who called service members who died in combat, quote, "losers and suckers." I could go into more detail, but the salient point is, how can this individual be trusted to handle the pressing issues of today?
Thank you so much, thank you. Derek Coy? Is your, sorry, you can start the time over, is the mic on?
Check, how's that?
That's good.
All right. Thank you, Chairperson Holden, Chairperson Dinowitz, and members of the committees for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Derek Coy, and I'm a senior program officer at the New York Health Foundation. I'm also a former sergeant in the United States Marine Corps, veteran of the Iraq War, and as a proud graduate of the City College of New York, a product of the CUNY system. Understanding and addressing the health-related needs of New York's veteran population is a fundamental part of my role at the foundation, so I hope that both my personal and professional experiences can provide insight to guide and inform the work and knowledge of these committees. The overwhelming majority of veterans transitions rather smoothly out of the service and back into communities like New York City once their time on active duty has come to an end. Yet many veterans like me do face unique challenges after transitioning out of the military that can intensify if left unaddressed, including issues with mental health, substance abuse, financial instability, and suicidal ideation. Student veterans are, of course, no exception. In my written testimony, I shared more background information on the characteristics of student veterans, statistics about suicide and mental health, and some of the promising programs in place to meet the needs of student veterans. But I want to use my time here today to tell you more about my own experiences as a student veteran at City College. There was no singular cause or solution to my challenges as a student veteran. Years of unaddressed trauma and substance abuse issues rendered on-campus counseling resources inadequate, they were simply ill-equipped for the complex services I required. Delays in the GI Bill payment that I received forced me to live my entire first semester without income. So after constantly choosing between paying rent, buying food, and supporting my substance abuse in one of the most expensive cities in the world, my mental health worsened as I teetered on the brink of homelessness. The task of seeking out individual services for each issue and navigating resources while I was attempting to further my education became an unbearable burden. Had I had access to comprehensive coordinated services in one location, my time as a student veteran would have been drastically different. Fortunately, things are much different today. New York City's Department of Veteran Services operates as a consolidated resource center. There are dozens of community-based organizations student veterans can access at no cost to them, which simply didn't exist when I was in grad school. And we have a much better understanding of the unique issues that veterans face. But work still needs to be done to ensure that student veterans have access to the services they need without feeling overwhelmed as they pursue both higher education and improved health. First, access to culturally competent services on campus is paramount. We must meet veterans where they are. Second, on-campus resources need to be able to seamlessly refer veterans to physical and mental health providers in the community if that's what they prefer. And finally, providing access to peer mentors when clinical services are required has been proven effective and can greatly help veterans if they need a trusted advisor who can help them navigate student life and other challenges they may encounter. It is my hope that I, with the help of the committee and other people testifying today, can make sure that veterans who choose to pursue higher education will have it easier than those who came before them, and I look forward to serving as a resource for the important work that you all do to ensure that that is the case. Thank you.
I didn't even need to reset the clock, you had the extra time to go. Thank you, and thank you, of course, to you and your family for your service and commitment to this country. And last on this panel is Joe Bello.
Thank you, thank you. Chairmen Holden, Dinowitz, members of the Veterans and Higher Education Committee, thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify, it's good to see you all. As we know, CUNY is the third-largest university system and has one of the most diverse student bodies in the United States. Because of this, one of the primary missions of CUNY is to serve as a vehicle of upward mobility of the disadvantaged in New York City. This is particularly relevant for veterans. As we know, veterans tend to have higher earnings and lower unemployment than non-veterans once their transition from active service is complete. Higher education is a major part of that transition. This year marks the fifteenth anniversary of the signing of the GI Bill into federal law, as well as the tenth anniversary of the CUNY Veterans Task Force, which was convened to address the needs of student veterans and examine CUNY's practices while developing recommendations to improve the experience for its student veterans. In its 2013 report, the task force acknowledged that CUNY was uniquely positioned to offer returning veterans an opportunity in higher education and stated that the number of veterans and military personnel applying and studying at CUNY was predicted to grow as larger as the conflicts in Iraq and Afghanistan draw it down. So why then doesn't CUNY today have better, equal, and a more robust support system for its student veterans? There are several reasons. As I've often said, CUNY is like a kingdom. The chancellor sends its directives and policies to the nobility, which is the college presidents. The colleges receive these directives, but unfortunately, depending upon each president, we've seen over the past several years, little has been accomplished depending on each campus. As a result, as I said in a Gotham Gazette article back in 2016, as a consequence, the more student veterans in the community talk about those campuses that are providing the services, the more student veterans will only consider those that are. The more veterans struggle on colleges with minimal services, the higher their attrition and transfer rates will be. We see this now, we've been seeing this on campuses such as John Jay and BMCC, which have robust services, resource partnerships, and enrollment numbers of veterans in comparison to such colleges as Baruch, which recently stated, "Nobody does it better as a higher education institute," yet has not had a dedicated only veteran services coordinator since the CUNY Task Force report back in 2013. Or the gap in services for veterans, and I remind you, we just started the semester, at City Tech, Medgar Everts, which currently don't have veterans coordinators. They might be in the process, but they didn't have a veterans coordinator for those. Along with the unresolved issues back from 2016, when Project Prove got involved, and no unresolved issues and no coordinator at LaGuardia Community College. And just for the record, I worked at LaGuardia Community College for almost fifteen years, and I was the director of the Veterans Upward Bound Program at one time. This leads to one of the fundamental problems with instituting policies to provide services, the need for personnel to carry it. It was testified today that the number of veterans attending CUNY was increasing up until the pandemic, but the number of staff at CUNY Central Office of Veterans Affairs stayed at one person, not including interns, until this just past November. Now with two personnel, this continues to be unacceptable and a strain on those working to provide information regarding services and resources. I thought it was very interesting that the vice chancellor needed experts in the veterans space, but she's been overseeing COVID and has been there at CUNY for over two years now. It also hinders CUNY's ability to look in on the campuses to make sure they are carrying out policies and have adequate baseline services for student veterans. So because of the lack of personnel and the lack of oversight, CUNY colleges are a hodgepodge of services for veterans, with some campuses doing well and others having the bare minimum, all based on each campus administration's regard towards veterans. This makes the council's Veterans Initiative funding to CUNY for its veterans peer-to-peer across the campuses so important, because you can imagine, and you heard testimony today, what the campuses would look like without that initiative funding.
Can you try to wrap it up?
I'm wrapping it up, I'm right here. So the cost of living, again, as Commissioner testified, money's provided over six hundred million in federal funding to the local economy through the GI Bill. However, the Pew Research Center recently released a study that showed living costs have become the dominant component of the cost of attending college. As was said here, older veterans juggling financial institutions, higher cost of housing, caring for other family members, and even childcare. As a result, the Pew Institute has stated that many are now having to borrow or take loans to cover living expenses. As a result of the pandemic and the lack of affordable housing and the cost of living, many active-duty members and student veterans are choosing to find better, more affordable, and friendly estates to come home. In 2016, student veterans came before this council to share what was going on at their campuses and what services were needed. They wrote an op-ed in the Gotham Gazette. I have enclosed it with testimony, as it is still relevant today as it was then. In conclusion, as we begin the fiscal year '24 budget, more resources and funding need to be devoted towards CUNY's Central Office of Veterans Affairs so they can better support student veterans and make sure all the campus services meet a standard of service. I would also propose Chancellor Rodriguez create a new veterans task force to review the past decade, see what has worked, what has changed, and what we need in the future. And I would recommend not funding Project Prove. We funded them for five years, and as the former citywide veterans director, I have some insights on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I have a couple of questions on. Now, you know, I like, I'd like the fact that, you know, that we should have veterans offices in every campus, on every campus in CUNY, and that is, to me, paramount. And I think, you know, we are talking to increasing the veterans budget for multiple agencies. And I like the idea of, you know, talking to the chancellor, and I will definitely commit to that from my committee, to fire off a letter saying that any increase in support from my committee for funding should have dedicated strings attached, almost, I would say, that you must have created an office, a veterans office, in every campus, on every campus, and that it will increase funding only if that happens. And I think that's a very, very good idea, and I think, I think nobody could disagree with that, especially in CUNY. If we're going to back our veterans, then let's be consistent.
Yeah, and again, this goes back to what I, like, recently, Councilman Dinowitz had an antisemitism hearing. And, you know, there was pressure on the chancellor, so the chancellor made the pressure on the presidents to make sure that the policies and regulations regarding antisemitism were in place and carried out. We need the same thing for veterans.
Just a question on my own education, on Baruch, let's say. What, had they changed presidents, or what happened?
They've changed presidents, but even during the changing of presidents, they haven't. Yeah, it's still inconsistent. What they did was Vice Chancellor Maybank's predecessor tried to put a leads and veterans person, leads being disabilities. And the work was just so overwhelming, that individual wound up quitting, and they wound up never replacing that person in that office. And again, there should be a standard veterans coordinator and a standard person that's doing the financial aid, not some of these counselors, some of these coordinators, directors, who are doing that as well.
Thank you, thank you. Derek, I'd like to talk to you, I'll give you my card after the hearing, and just I'd like to pick your brains, because obviously, you have, you have some very, very good insight as to how we can improve, certainly helping our veterans inside the college campus, so.
Be happy to be a resource, absolutely.
Yeah, if you have, yeah, certainly. And Lisa, the arts saved me. I came from the arts, and it gave me purpose, it gave me a focus, and it made me feel that I was pretty good, like I was, I had something to offer. And that's how I had a career in the arts, so I understand that, and we will focus on definitely restoring funding and even then some, because I believe that going to a play can change your life. And I see you have some background in the theater because of your testimony, where you did that. But thank you so much for your testimony, we'll talk also about that. Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you. Our next panel is on Zoom. And the panel is Adriana Alfred, Renee Cabrera Gonzalez, Dr. Linnea Vario, and Alex Stein was signed up, though I'm not sure they're on Zoom anymore. Okay, if you can unmute Adriana Alfred?
Yes, yes, sir. I was just in the whole side of the communication, can anybody hear me clearly?
We hear you, great.
Okay, I just want to say greetings to the chairman, to the committee chair, and especially Lisa, vice chancellor, and all the committee members, and all the veterans to this. My name is Adrian Alfred, I'm a retired Army veteran. I'm a graduate student from Central Texas College, Kingsborough Community College, and I'm currently in John Jay College. I've, I don't want to, what I want to say, I do appreciate every conversation when it comes towards veterans, both in the military and out of the military. And I also want to compliment Ms. Lisa for the great work she's doing and allowing me to be a part of the CUNY Central Office, the pay mentorship to help students. A little bit of what I do as a pay mentor. I'm responsible for one hundred and twenty-five students in Kingsborough Community College, and the important work that pay mentors do helps these students to stay in college and feel welcome home. As one of the gentleman mentioned, I don't, I don't remember his name. With veterans communicating with other veterans, it brings a sense of welcomeness and calm to these veterans, because we're on a level where we can communicate with them, because we're all military members, we know how to speak to them and how to articulate in certain situations. And the pay mentor program is very important because sometimes we don't only look at these students as just regular, we look at it as one of our own. And as was said earlier, we've put our lives on the line for our country, and we love our country, and we're more than happy to do it again. So we bring that attitude now in civilian world, where we treat students and veterans the same way. As simple as calling a veteran student and finding out how they're doing in college, how they're going with their professor, how is their financial aid, do they have the good amount of resources in order, if they need something, like if they have permanent housing. These, all this information is being provided by the CUNY Office of Veterans Affairs. Sometimes we have Wellness Wednesdays, where speakers from all across of life, where there's different veteran agency comes and speaks about suicide, financial management, and the resources. These are important things that keep a veteran going. Right, so I just want to, in closing, I just want to say that I'll be greatly and highly appreciative if the veteran pay mentor program could be more funded along with CUNY Office of Veterans Affairs, because the work we do for veterans and for our community is extremely great.
Time expired.
Thank you, I've seen it with students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Renee Cabrera Gonzalez on Zoom?
Yes, good afternoon, chairmans and council members. My name is Renee Cabrera Gonzalez. I am a United States Marine Corps veteran, and I would like to thank the council today to the opportunity to testify today on behalf of TDF's Veteran Theater Going Program. I'm testifying today to discuss the impact that TDF's Veteran Theater Going Program has on the veteran community. First, I would like to start off with my personal experience and the joy this program has provided to me and my family. For one, for many years, the thought of me going to a Broadway show was nonexistent. It was until recently I was awarded with some tickets to see Aladdin on Broadway that I grew a greater interest in the overall experience. I was able to share the experience with my family. Wow, I have never, did I experience something so wonderful. The visual effects, great acting, music, they followed the storyline to the T. It even brought my wife tears of joy. Not to forget the other veterans that were in attendance, some familiar faces and new ones to meet. It was a great time, thanks to TDF. Looking around the theater, it filled me with joy to see how many veterans were in attendance, their smiling faces, and how they connected with others in the room. I say this is an essential program for veterans to help them get out of their comfort zone and reconnect with society. It is true that veterans do have the tendency to be introverts and shy away from society because of fear of what they may do or how they feel around the general public or crowds. This is usually due to their mental, physical disabilities, which can be provoked by just about almost anything. Not to forget, there is a portion of the vast population of veterans that can't acclimate to civilian life so easily due to their physical and mental disabilities such as PTSD, depressions, anxieties, withdrawing from society because they have the feeling of not fitting in or being understood. This program helps to bridge the gap between veterans and civilians. The connection one gets from another person who has the same interests as oneself, this is a great way to help veterans reconnect with the general public, get to know a different side of views on cultural, be a great storyteller. I firsthand know that veterans may need extra attention and guidance in different subjects and life challenges. subjects and life challenges. In my work, I too am a veteran peer mentor at Lehman College. At Lehman College CUNY, one of my main roles is to guide and help the veteran community with one-on-one sessions, direct dedication to assisting, mentoring, helping with resources, programs, anything available to them, and my resource is given to them. You know, a fear of crowds is common within the veterans. The Veteran Theater, Theater Going Program can help diffuse the issue by bringing people from different backgrounds together with music, acting.
Time expired.
And, yes, if you can please wrap it up. Thank you.
Yes. In conclusion, this is why programs such as the Veterans Theater Going Program is funded to continue the work to provide for the veterans community. It's one of those programs that helps open, open us veterans up to new views and new, new experiences. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I have to jump on the bandwagon, too. I, you know, I taught in arts schools and for, you know, for high school kids, and I've seen the transformative power of, of the theater and the, and the arts. So I want to thank you for your testimony and of course, for the work that TDF does. Next, we have Dr. Linnea Vario. And I apologize in advance if that pronunciation of your name is off.
That's actually exactly right. Nice to meet you. I am Linnea Vario. I'm a clinical neuropsychologist at the Stephen A. Cohen Military Family Center at NYU Langone Health. Good afternoon, Chairs Holden and Dinowitz, and members of the New York City Committee on Veterans and the Committee on Higher Education. The Cohen Military Family Center was established just over 10 years ago with the goal to fill gaps in mental health services available to veterans and their families in the New York City area. My testimony today will aim to provide insight into the types of challenges faced by student veterans and how we at the Military Family Center serve NYC student veterans. We are grateful to the City Council for its funding, support for our center, and my position specifically, and we urge the council to consider further supplementing citywide capacity to meet ongoing demand for supportive services for student veterans. As the City Council is aware, some student veterans are experiencing challenges in successfully pursuing their academic plans after military discharge. At times, daily difficulties in completing schoolwork can be due to mental health conditions such as PTSD, a condition frequently represented in the population. Challenges can also include difficulties that originate after experiencing a traumatic brain injury or due to previously undiagnosed developmental disorders such as ADHD or learning disorders. These specific challenges may first arrive, arise, or become apparent when a veteran returns to an academic environment and has new demands to manage. Oftentimes, veterans are unaware of how to request help or hesitant to do so. It is essential that we, as providers, are empathetic and familiar with appropriate and accessible services. While the benefits offered by the GI Bill offer potentially life-changing access to higher education opportunities, the challenges of mental health conditions or learning disorders may present barriers to veteran success. Often, individuals who are struggling academically are told that these challenges are not mental health-related, and thus typical avenues for support are not available to them, leaving a gap in services. At this point, student veterans facing these challenges are often referred to private providers in the community, which can be cost prohibitive, or these individuals may not be culturally competent with veterans' experiences. Very often, veterans who are not able to access, to access evaluations in the New York City area go without such support services. With support from the City Council Discretionary Funds, our center has been filling this gap in care by providing comprehensive neuropsychological evaluations and treatment to veterans free of charge. Many of the veterans seeking support through this program are students, and our model lifts common barriers to this type of care and support, and therefore allows veterans to focus more specifically on achieving their higher education goals. A comprehensive neuropsychological evaluation can serve to identify cognitive and emotional struggles that a veteran is experiencing secondary to, to these conditions I mentioned before. And with these accommodations, they are more likely to achieve their goals professionally and academically in order to remain in New York City. So thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you, Linnea. And by the way, you have a marvelous program we became aware of when I became the Chair of Veterans, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but your great work. I know you had a waiting list, right? You still do have a waiting list. How many veterans did it grow? Is it up to now?
That's difficult to estimate, because we have been needing to refer out. On my individual waiting list, there's at least, you know, 10 people that are waiting to get these services, and many of whom are really kind of desperate to get accommodations in school. But in our clinic waiting list, I would have to defer to our clinic director. We could certainly get you those, those numbers for, for services, more generally for veterans and families.
And let's meet about funding, additional funding that you can help all veterans that request it. So we'll schedule something soon. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anybody else on Zoom who wishes to testify? If so, please use the raise hand function. I'll turn it over to Chair Holden.
Well, thank you, everyone, both remote and in person here. Excellent, excellent hearing. I think I've learned a lot, and I think we have certainly an agenda now that's been expanded, thanks to CUNY's testimony, which was extensive, and I appreciate that. And also, DVS, thanks, Commissioner, and then your staff for the great work you do, and all the advocates that are here and remotely. Excellent, excellent testimony, and thank you all.
I would like to note that written testimony will, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. I would also like to thank DVS, CUNY, for all the witnesses who, who testified, to my co-chair Holden, for your years of service in elected life at CUNY, bettering the lives of people here in New York City. And as was mentioned, there's certainly an agenda, not just budgetary, but functionally, how are we going to help our veteran students? And, and I know we dived into that today, and there's still a lot more work to do, and I look forward to working with co-chair Holden, with DVS, and with CUNY to ensure that our veterans are getting the services and support that they have earned with their service to this country. With that, I close out the hearing. Thank you.